And I will officially call the meeting to order. It's the study agenda, uh, study session for uh, and executive. Do we have an executive session tonight, Michael?
No.
So, a study session for, uh, Ashland Park and Recreation Commission, uh, of April seventh, twenty twenty-one. It's six P M. We're in electronic meeting and I've called the meeting to order. I am gonna make one announcement, uh, before we move into the agenda and I have been in communication with the, uh, Ashland School District Board. And they would like to have a joint meeting with us the end of this month. And we have two dates and I'm gonna give them to you now and hopefully at the end of the meeting, we can, uh, see if those dates work for you. I have, uh, April twenty-seventh, it's a Tuesday at six thirty. And I have Thursday, April twenty-ninth at six thirty also, that we would be able to meet, um, uh, with, with the school board in a Zoom format, uh, to discuss common, uh, common goals and issues. And I presume it'd probably be an hour, an hour and a half meeting, it wouldn't be that long. So, um, if you can, uh, kinda look at your calendars as the night goes on and then.
Yes, I, I'm just curious, um, um, th- so the topic is not just, um, Hunter Court, then is that correct?
Right, uh, you know, they didn't, um, Eva didn't specify, the chair of the school district didn't specify what she wanted to talk about, but, um, she reached out to, to get a meeting and as you know, over the last three or four years, we've reached out a couple of times at least to try to set up meetings and, and haven't been able to do it. So, um, I took the opportunity, I responded back to her that we would, um, like to speak about Walker School, but we also have other issues such as, uh, Lincoln School Park and, uh, and the, and Daniel Meyer Pool, that we would also like to, um, but we didn't, we didn't form, uh, a- an agenda yet, wanted to make sure we could make a meeting. And it's, it's, it's not mandatory. I just think it'd be good if the more, the more commissioners we can have together, uh, in that meeting would be beneficial. And, uh, so anyways, think about those dates. Commissioner Lewis?
Uh, once again, that was April twenty-seventh or April twenty-ninth?
Yeah, Tuesday and Thursday of the last week of the month.
Okay.
It's thirty is in.
Six thirty, okay.
And it sounds like they would set the, they would have the school, um, staff set a Zoom meeting up and we'd be able to do that.
Yes, I'm available for both of those times at this point.
Okay, and I am too. So, I just wanted to get it out early so you could, uh, kinda check your calendars and we could. Cause I, I told Eva that we, I would get back to her to, later tonight or tomorrow morning so that we could establish that.
The Tuesday would be preferable for me.
So, we're leaning today unless, uh, Commissioner Lewis. Do you have any?
They both work for me.
Okay, so let's, I, I'll go back with Tuesday. Does that work for you, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, then, um, let's just, let's just go with Tuesday, uh, April twenty-seventh at six thirty and I'll, I'll let you know how that goes. Okay, then we will move on. We have no, we had some public input letters to us, but I have no, uh, no one signed up to speak to us. So, we'll move right into item number three, which is the, uh, APRC twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty-three biennium goals discussion. And I'll turn it over to Director Black.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen with the presentation and we're gonna, the plan is to, um, to go over all of the goals. Um, can you see my presentation screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right. So, what I'd like to do is, um, I'll go back up here for a second. What I'd like to do is, um, just talk for a second, uh, for the public, anybody who's watching to understand how we got to this point so far. The commissioners have met twice, uh, to date in public meetings to discuss, uh, goal setting. And out of those, uh, out of the first meeting, a, a large list of goals was, uh, was given, uh, from the commissioners. And staff had some, some input on those at that time as well. And then we also, uh, met, um, a month ago and talked about, uh, well, I had taken all of the goals that were given, uh, from the commissioners and refined them down into light categories. And we were able to get those into categories that were similar. And it ended up, uh, looking like a lot of the commissioners had similar, uh, goals in mind. Uh, some of them were stated a little bit differently or might, might have had different angles to them. Um, but they all, uh, there's a lot of them that could be combined and I suggested that we combine those. Um, over the last month, I've, I've taken those and refined those a little bit further and was able to, to go from about twenty-four goals or goal areas down to thirteen. Um, and this is my, uh, proposal to you. However, these are your goals and all I can do is, is come up with what I think the language, uh, should be based on the conversations that we've had and the direction I've been given. This meeting tonight is the opportunity for you to, to review those, um, and give me feedback and, um, or change them. Um, move around, um, add, although we're getting kinda late in the game to add things, it is still enough, there is still an opportunity to add um, or to refine any of the goals that are up on the screen. So, what I will do is I will go through, um, oh, and I should also state, the importance of doing these goals every two years is that, uh, these goals actually guide the budget and the capital improvement program, which we'll talk about a little later tonight. Um, the budget, it, uh, the budget has expenses and revenues in it and where those expenses go and, and which areas of Ashland Parks and Recreation get the funding, is, is based off of the goals. And the C I P is the same way. Um, we have revenues that come in and the, um, the C I P dollars are going out to those goals, uh, to accomplish those goals that the commissioners have in mind, as well as other goals that have been in previous years and maintenance projects that have to be done and things like that. So, so it's, uh, it's really important to do the goals every two years and it gives us as staff, uh, kind of our um, direction over the next couple of years of what to work on, which directions to go in. Eventually, we will get to a point, and it won't be too long from now, where we've refined the goals down far enough to where, uh, the commissioners can actually vote on them and prioritize the, the goals. So, you can go from, um, where we started, which was, you know, close seventy-five um, different stated goals to twenty-four categories of goals to thirteen, um, goal, actual goals with a number of different objectives, um, to whatever we end up with after this meeting and the ability to then vote on all of those items, all those goals to prioritize which ones rise to the top and, um, and get the most consideration. I mean, I was gonna say per se, but it's, it's reality, actually. Um, they do get the most consideration, the one that, the ones that are, um, uh, prioritized towards the top. So, tonight, what I'll do is I'll bring my screen back up in a second and we'll go through each one of the goals one by one. This is a study session, it's a work session. Um, we should, we can talk back and forth. Um, we have opportunity during the meeting to make changes. I'll be taking notes and I can, uh, I can make changes to the goals as we're going along or after the meeting, based on whatever the direction we have. Um, it's, you know, sometimes it's, because it's a study session and there won't be a motion at the end, it would be good to know as we're going along. Um, if, if you don't agree, as a commissioner, if you don't agree with something that's being stated, please, please, you know, speak up. If you strongly do agree with something, um, and it's going that direction, probably no need to, to, to say anything unless you think there needs to be changes or, um, there needs to be revisions and things like that. But, um, it's good for me to know though, as we're going through these, um, that the commissioners are behind them, that I actually have gone in the right direction with the language and everything. So, some feedback on every goal would, would be nice since we won't be making, you won't be making a motion at the end of the meeting, this meeting. So, um, Commissioner Long, is there?
Well, um, I, I think I'll wait till we get, I'm, I'm just kinda reading through it again and I, I see some that seem inconsistent, but we'll get to it.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what we'll do, for sure. So, I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna get to it right now, actually. And, um, all right, so let's start off with number one. And, uh, this goal came from, um, well, one of the discussions that we had to begin with and the discussion that I gave or a, a presentation that I gave to the commissioners on a couple of different occasions regarding the, um, the lack of a permanent dedicated funding source for Ashland Parks and Recreation. And the importance, uh, for the financial sustainability of APRC going forward to have that. So, I, I have drafted this goal as investigate, develop and implement a denic- a dedicated permanent funding source to ensure the long-term financial sustainability of the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission. Now, under that, I've got three objectives and you'll see this, uh, along the way where I felt like, um, some of the, uh, the goals that were proposed, uh, actually fell under a broader goal and then became objectives. So, with this one, um, one of the objectives is update the M O U with the City of Ashland and impl- implement a new fee schedule. In essence, uh, charge this. I say that is, charge, um, the city, the actual cost of the services that we're providing. Um, that's one way to increase funding, um, to Ashland Parks and Recreation. And that's through a contract, um, or an M O U, which is a memorandum of understanding. And the next objective, and, and it's not exclusive to these, so these can be added to. But, uh, with the City of Ashland, investigate and implement, implement dedicated funding sources directed to APRC such as food and beverage, tax and transit occupancy tax. When I was reading this earlier, um, and I didn't make any changes to any of the ones that I sent out in the packet just yet, but I realized that, uh, we also should be stating, um, property tax in this line as well because we don't wanna leave property tax out. And when we get to the, uh, funding discussion that we're gonna have a little bit later, you'll see, um, that, uh, we are recommending that going forward, the property tax be a dedicated amount as well and not just an arbitrary amount, um, as it has been the last few, well, I don't know, it arbitrary in the sense that it's not the same as it has been in the past. Um, and, um, and that number didn't change because of, there wasn't a change in that number because of something we did. It was a number that the city gave to us um, without really an explanation of why that number was the right number. So, I guess it was arbitrary. Um, explore the feasibility of forming an independent taxing district. Now, this one is, um, something that we talked about in the, in the beginning with the goals. Um, this is optional where it's, it's something that could be done. Um, the, the goal should be, I think, to have financial sustainability, not necessarily to, to have the goal of what the outcome that we want, like, uh, how we're going to accomplish that. Um, there's several ways to, to accomplish financial sustainability. One of them would be, uh, forming an independent taxing district and that's a pretty good way. Um, another way would be to, um, to have dedicated funding sources like we're talking about with food and beverage, transient occupancy tax, which actually no one's talking about right now, but I think we should explore that. And then the, uh, property tax. So, um, so as we're going through these, some of these objectives, um, you know, we, they can be added to or they, they might be canceled out by other actions.
We had discussed, uh, systems development fees in some point on this. Shouldn't we just throw that? I don't know, maybe it's somewhere else on the list, but, uh,
Yeah, you know, actually, it should be under here.
Okay.
And, uh, that, that's a good catch. It should, I think it should be under here. Um, there's, there's one caveat with that though. Um, I think the reason why I didn't put it under here is because, um, in order to change the system development fees, you have to do a master plan. And since we have a master plan goal, um, I put it under there. But one thing that we could do is, under here, we could, um, as an objective, we could, could put, complete the S D C evaluation and, and, um, and establish S D C fees consistent with whatever, you know, with, with, with what the master plan says.
And is that a state mandated, uh, um, criteria that you're listing and to have a master plan or is that?
Yeah, it is. So, in order to charge a system development charge, you have to establish that you actually have a system that, that system has needs in, in terms of, uh, maintenance, deferred maintenance and growth that comes as a result of, of people moving to the community and building new houses and, and getting new water lines and sewer lines and that kind of stuff. So, um, so yes, we do have to put together a master plan and justify the amount that we're charging for an S D C. Um, and that's the way that you do it. And that, that is actually a, a rule Oregon administrative.
We have a question from Commissioner Bell and then, uh, Commissioner Long.
I'm just wondering, uh, do you want us to edit these as we're going? Like, for example, is there somebody that's going to be revising this, the first goal as we're going through these?
Yeah, yeah. So, I would, I'm gonna keep notes, um, and ask Rachel, um, Rachel's on here. Rachel, could you help me keep notes? And, and Tara as well, just to make sure when we're done, we'll compare all the notes and, and make sure we got everything. And then we'll do a run-through later on. And if we missed anything, you'll be, you can tell us before we go to the voting stage. But, yeah, please tell me what you think should change in each, any one of these goals as we're going along.
Well, sure. Okay, a quick, um, point about your, uh, the last, uh, category here, explore the feasibility of forming an independent taxing district. It seems that if you're talking about hiring a consultant, it would be maybe helpful to know how much the consultant might cost and what the likely return in a taxing district would be and whether that would, you know, the consultant's fees would be justified by the value that we generate.
Well, I, I think, um, okay, so I guess there's a couple of ways of looking at that. One is, the, uh, I can tell you right now that if, if in the end hiring a consultant um, led to us having an independent taxing district, the amount that they were charging would, would most likely be worth it. It'd probably be in the range of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars of consulting fees. But, but we would have a, a dedicated tax source forever. Um, so, so I don't know i- in advance, um, what I'm, that a feasibility study of the feasibility of performing a feasibility study, um, would, would make sense, um, at this point. Because what I'm proposing is that, yeah, if we get to the point where you want to do it, we explore the feasibility of forming a district. And then, at that point, we would be looking at, um, consultant costs and all those kinds of things. But, um, I don't believe, uh, there's a cost benefit analysis generally, um, of, uh, the cost of the consultant versus how much money taxes we're gonna get as a result of it.
Okay.
So, because, I mean, the bottom line is what we'd be shooting for is enough taxes to, to fund us, which would be, um, seven million dollars a year, you know, something like that, or, uh, six, six million five hundred thousand dollars a year at this point.
Right.
Okay.
And Commissioner Long, you've been on the list, and then, uh, Eldridge.
You're muted.
All right, I'll defer till later.
Okay. Commissioner Eldridge?
Clarifying question about the first bullet here, the update M O U with the City of Ashland and implement new fee schedule. That is, that are for, that's for city lands that APRC manages specifically or does it cover other things?
Yeah, it, it covers city lands that, that we maintain. They, they manage them. Um, uh, it's like the boulevards, the airport, um, the justice court grounds outside the justice court and the, um, Community Justice Center, um, places like that. And, you know, the flowers on Main Street, you know, thing, you know, things like that, so.
And would that also include, um, like, areas in the watershed that are like, um, water treatment plants, um, lands or city lands, like public works, city lands, et cetera?
Yeah. So, one of the things I'll just touch on really quick is, over time, Ashland Parks and Recreation has taken on duties from the city that we, we haven't been, um, received more money for. If you'll recall, some of you back, uh, I believe it was, um, it might have been six years ago, it might have only been four years ago, but the fire department made a proposal that, um, we would take over managing the volunteers on all of the city's lands and ours, which we already did, but, um, they would support us in getting a new body to help manage that. And, uh, it didn't pass muster with the budget committee and, and the city administrator and never, never happened as far as the new body. But we ended up taking on the work anyways. So, this would be all city lands, including watershed, trails, all of those things that we're already doing and not getting reimbursed for, as well as the, um, the stuff that we're doing and getting reimbursed for, but haven't raised the prices for in that decade. Um, and then anything new that is potentially out there that the city would like us to do. Um, I know that, uh, this, the fire department would like us to take over all, um, permitting and, and I know other people would as well, as far as trails are go, trails go and, and things like that and managing the trails in the watershed and new trails coming in and, and things like that. But we've been reluctant to just agree to do it. I've been reluctant to just agree to do it, um, because we've done enough, uh, neighborly things without getting paid for them that we're at our, our limit right now.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so next, um, okay, so the next one is a goal that, that we've had for quite a while. Um, it used to include the, um, trails master plan, um, but we did complete that. So, it's been modified to state, update the Oak, Ashland Open Space Comprehensive Plan and develop strategies to implement the plan and purchase critical lands as appropriate, based on needs, availability of land and ability to maintain the land. It may seem like a, a lot of words are mouthful to, to say all of these things, but, but really, I, I think one of the things when we put out goals is trying to be as transparent as possible. Um, updating the open space plan is one thing, um, but letting people know that if there is a need out there and an opportunity comes up and we have the, we have the, um, the money available and the ability to maintain the land, that we're gonna want to also implement the plan. So, um, you know, we've talked about not purchasing land for a little bit of time and things like that. But, um, sometimes you don't have the opportunity to decide. Well, usually you don't have the opportunity to decide when somebody wants to sell their land. And if it's critical to the implementation of the open space plan, uh, we may be in a position where we need to act. And I think it's important in the goal to state, you know, that that's the intention, that we could potentially act on that as well.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, I think I've stated this to, uh, uh, Director Black and I believe to Commissioner Gardner, but I don't, haven't said this to the entire commission, commissioners. And that is, that I, I, I strongly support this goal. And I don't see it, it's not the plan, really, it's the plan map that needs to be updated. So, I don't think it's really that big of a job. And, um, examples, um, of what we need to change are, or just as a given example, is the, uh, lower rentals property adjacent to the Hellman School. That was only on there because it, way back in two thousand two, when this was adopted, um, it, the idea was, we were really short of soccer fields. And the idea was, that was, that property along with the Hellman School property together could make some, some soccer field. The, the Hellman School property is no longer available because it's being developed. And so, we really, and we don't really have that same need for soccer fields we had back then. So, that piece of, piece should be removed from the plan. But those are the kind of things that, um, it's really not gonna be that hard to do, but we really do need to put, uh, that's just an example of why we need to do this.
So, is, um, you know, it's a really good point, Commissioner Long. Would anybody be opposed? Or would you be opposed, Commissioner Long, to limiting the, this goal to the Open Space Comprehensive Plan map? Um.
Well, I, 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 I don't think we should do that because we might, in the process, we might find that there is some language that, um, that, that needs updating. But I don't, but I, I, I think we ought to leave it the way it is, but I think the focus should be on the map, which makes it a lot easier. The task is a lot easier.
Okay.
Okay, good. Commissioner Bell, go ahead.
So, just so that I understand better. So, what you mean is that you, we are updating the map, which identifies the places that we are looking to purchase land? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Where that are on the list to potentially purchase, not that we're going to purchase them necessarily.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a hierarchy of need, uh, as far as the lands go. You know, there's like desirable, necessary and, and critical as far as the, the land acquisition goes. So, not, not everything that's on the map that comes up for sale needs to be purchased, but, um, but by updating the map, at least we have a global or a more a, a broader perspective when we're looking at, um, the city when lands come up.
Right, and we can consider them. Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Lewis.
And, uh, if we're doing our due diligence, this is something that we really have to do, you know, at least once a decade because it's part of the comprehensive plan and it's kind of a housekeeping thing. It, it, it's, uh, it, it, we wanna be as up to date with our plans, just like the, uh, uh, Trails Master Plan. Um, not that this would be at that level, but of, uh, of, uh, amount of work. But, uh, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Long. This, this is something that we wanna keep up to date and keep it topical and, uh, don't get behind the curve on, on, uh, lands that are critical.
Uh, follow-up, Commissioner Long?
Yeah, just, there's another reason I think it's good to, to, uh, uh, periodically update this because then it gets it before the planning commissioners and the planning department. And over and over in the past, there's been times where, um, pro- uh, properties that are on our, they're on the city's comprehensive plan for purchase, it come before, um, um, the part, the planning commission and the planning department. And we weren't even notified. So, we didn't even have a, a, you know, chance to speak on them. And I think the more times we bring it before them, the more likelihood is that they'll be aware that these lands are lands that we're, we, we hope to purchase in the future.
Right. Okay, very good. Carry on.
Okay, so number three is explore the feasibility of and decide on the addition of a low angle trail within the east side open space of Lithia Park as proposed by the Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association. And the reason why I wrote this one the way that I did is because, um, I think before it said, you know, explore the feasibility of. But I think in the end, what really everyone's looking for is, is a decision to come down on this so that it's not in feasibility analysis in perpetuity, so.
Go ahead, Commissioner Long.
Yeah, um, I would like to see this changed. And I would like to see a change based on, uh, the last, uh, document we received from the Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association. I think it should be changed to say, um, explore the feasibility of and make a decision on addition of, um, the trails that were proposed by, uh, Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association. So, rather than just focus on this one trail, we've got a proposal for them for, um, a trail in Sisk- um, Siskiyou Mountain, uh, Park, uh, two, two in Lithia Park, and there may be others, they're all on our property. So, I think that it doesn't, to me, make sense just to have the goal focused on this one. I think it should focus on, um, the actual proposal that we received. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I really think, I feel strongly that we have the wrong, uh, it's not the wrong, it's just not updated. We need to update that to be consistent with the other, with this proposal. There's a, it makes just as much sense to talk about the others as it does this one. So, I'd like to see them all, uh, pull up together.
Uh, Commissioner Bell?
Would it, is it possible to add in this goal some language that says that as an alternate strategy, we could provide improved signage that, uh, makes the ex- Improved signage that makes the existing pathways that people can access the upper trails more obvious. In other words, roads that already exist and where you would not have to cut new trails through the park. Which could be used more clearly signed for mountain bikers coming from the city up into going into the trails and back and forth.
Yeah, I I I personally don't think that needs to be a goal. It's already in the master plan for the. For the Trails Master Plan and it's something that we could add as a. An action again on something like this, but as an individual goal. Yeah, sure, we could add it to something like this. I would add it as. I'm not sure how I would add that, but it's something that you're right, we should look at, but it's more of a. Direction, say, hey, why don't we do this instead of having. Having it be its actual part of the goal. So.
Commissioner Eldridge.
I think what Commissioner Land says, Lawd says is makes a lot of sense because. It's the sustainable trails plan that RVNBA submitted to us is very comprehensive. It looks at what is existing right now in terms of mountain bike trails and it prioritizes things in terms of safety and. How they link to the entire system. And of course, the this Lithia, some of these, the Lithia proposal is in here as well and it's prioritized in there and. I do think that it makes a lot of sense to include this entire plan to look at it as a system because. You know, this this watershed is is viewed by the community of mountain bikers and then, of course, people that are coming in to visit. As a holistic system and you're experiencing it as a as a connected system and there's a lot of missing links there and there's a lot of places where things aren't. Don't make sense or they're not safe. And so I would definitely support adding. Either having the sustainable trails plan as like evaluate and let's see, what is the wording we have now? You know, evaluate and review that and look at it as a system, but and then, you know, maybe sub objectives. Because of course, the Lithia one is one that RVNBA has been, you know, really. Coming to us and asking about for and presenting for a year and a half, so that's my thought.
Commissioner Lewis.
I don't know about any other commissioners, but. I've been getting some concerns about the wording on this Lithia Park one. From citizens and. It's a whole different ballgame than than the trails that are outside Lithia Park. We'd be we'd be having to modify. Rules that have been in place for quite a while, so this one would actually needs a lot more discussion. I think the. The outside of Lithia Park would be kind of a different envelope is the way I look at it and. And there's going to be people showing up very concerned about a low angle trail through. Through Lithia Park, so we might want to just consider that. I I I see a value of. Lumping them together, but I think Lithia Park is going to be different than all the rest of them, so so let's just keep that in mind.
Commissioner Law.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I I'm suggesting that we include all of the the ones in the. The Rogue. Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association proposal that are with that are on APRC lands. Because that, you know, obviously some are on our lands, but I I think looking at the feasibility of all will make sense. And then at some point to make a decision on all of them. We we need to make a decision one way or the other. Whether it's whether it's going to be a tough decision for on Lithia Park or an easier decision on something outside of Lithia Park. We're still going to need to make a decision because until we make a decision, we're going to keep having, it's going to keep coming up. So I think that I think it makes sense to me, the way the goal is is stated feasibility and then ultimately make a decision. But it just needs to be just for the ones within our system, not ones that are outside of of our purview.
Go ahead, Michael.
So I could modify the goal to be. Explore the feasibility, make that more general and then have two objectives, have one of them be the the trail. On the Lithia Park hillside, so it's actually, it doesn't get buried in the other thing and it doesn't. The baggage from that doesn't affect the other review on all the other lands and then have a second objective that said. The, you know, that has the rest of the plan as proposed to review. So that, you know, that people can see it called out the Lithia Park one and are aware of it. It makes it more transparent. And it also. It states they are two different things like Commissioner Lewis said, which I I I agree with him. I think that. For the most part, we're going to be looking towards people who use the mountain bikers on the the trails up in the watershed. But there will be a lot more people who are stakeholders in the on the Lithia Park low angle trail. That would want to be way more involved in something on that end than maybe on the on the stuff in the watershed, so.
Yeah, I I think that's a good way to to break out that goal with the objectives. The goal. Does that satisfy the rest of the commissioners at this point? Okay, good.
Okay, so let's go back to. To this. Okay, so number four would be, and this is a big one and. And you, this is the one that I thought maybe I probably have most disagreement with and and maybe trying to. Some of these actions being separated into their own goals, but number four is perform a system wide master plan for APRC to include the following sections. At least, and then I I put in parentheses. These sections could be accomplished on their own independently, but in the end, what I would see is everything on here would actually become part of. The system wide master plan regardless of when it was done or or which consultants did it or if we did it on our own. The vision and goals, I just threw that in there because I I think we need to, our staff has taken a a look at our vision. And mission, but I think we need to look at that as well and it's good every time you look at the master plan, I think to remind yourself to go in. And evaluate those things on a on a global level as far as global being Ashland Parks and Recreation. Park system maintenance and improvements. I I think this could be a section in there as well. Well, this definitely would be a section, be one of the biggest sections because it would be the one. The improvements part would be leading towards the STC fees and establishing the need for an STC fee. Fleet evaluation recommendations. Aside from the the action that's below it or the objective that's below it, we we have a need to look at our fleet. Just about the number of vehicles we have too and how we use our vehicles and things like that. And then you go down to the next objective, which is related, an environmental sustainability and implementation plan. Especially with greenhouse gas inventory and. Part of that would be the buildings that we have, which would be park system maintenance and improvements and. And part of that would be fleet and part of that would be the equipment that we're using, which would come down below in design and maintenance guidelines. And and things like that. So you can see they're all, they're all kind of connected, not kind of, they're, they are connected. STC evaluation, I want to take that back. They're all complementary of each other and help build on each other, but they also can happen independently. And then the other parts can come in and build on top of what's been established on the with the other sections. So the STC fee evaluation, that would be looking at all of the improvements and maintenance we need to do. And how we're going to pay for those things and then coming up with a fee that would be charged. STC stands for system development charge. Every time someone builds a new house or a business, they're adding to the system. And they would pay a a system development charge for becoming part of the system buying into the park system. Right now, there are already STC fees on parks. It's just really low. We happen to be one of the lowest STC fees in the state. And but I I can assure you that. Sewer and water and transportation and things like that, they're constantly looking at those. In fact, they're going through a process right now at the city to evaluate the STC fees according to their master plans to see if they need to be increased. And we and we need to do that. It's been a very long time. And be completed independently, it'd be a good thing to add to a master plan so that people have one place to go to to get information about. How we develop and how we maintain and then the policies could also be part of this system wide master plan. So.
I have a question. Can 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 we do that master plan on our own?
Yes, I I think you technically could part of it, but part of it. You know, it goes beyond our expertise and we need to be able to get good estimates on. The costs of different infrastructure and we need to have people come in and and professionals who are. You know, are trained in different fields to look at our buildings, look at our turf, look at our. Our hydrology throughout the park system and and things like that. And so I think some of it is, parts of it are are outside of our. Expertise, but we definitely could do parts of it ourselves. I just don't think we could complete it.
So one follow up and then I'll go to Julian and and Jim. So can, is it? When we make that decision, then would we do some of the things we can do ourselves prior to. Considering hiring someone to try to bring it all together or how how would that work? I mean, with with all the objectives that we have under this goal, how how does how does outside consultant? Fit into that?
Okay, so let me just put it back and I'll show you a couple of examples here or I'll run you through a couple of examples. Vision and goals, I think this is something that we can do on our own. It's always good to have a moderator when you're doing these things, but it's something we could do on our own. This one here, the park system maintenance and improvements, it's something that we're actually working on right now. The city council and the budget committee have requested that. Or maybe it was the city manager, I'm not sure, but in the budget book, what we're trying to do is come up with an idea of all of the unfunded. Maintenance and building improvements and not just buildings, but but I mean like parks and everything, all the improvements that need to be done. That are unfunded at this point. So we're actually going through a process right now of defining. All the things that we know need to be done, like a new roof on the senior center. We know that needs to be done. We we've already had someone come give us a bid. And and take a look at the roof. That's known, but the things that we wouldn't. Were less suited for our. That consultants are more suited for are taking, looking at the big picture again. And and giving giving us a big picture view of everything and then prioritize, helping us prioritize based on everything that we need to do. We're really good at pointing out the things that we're familiar with, but there are things, there are things that we can't see. There there's internal things that we can't see. There's there are problems in different places that we might not be aware of. Or we might not be aware of the magnitude of of the thing itself. So having a consultant come and look at that can help us by identifying being, looking deeper. Looking more holistically and then putting that all together and prioritizing that in a way that we need to accomplish it based on the risk that we have. So so there is some of that we are already doing and all these other ones as well. There's there's parts of it, but. You know, other part, the other part of it is is capacity and bandwidth, you know, we. We don't. We don't employ a an engineering division or a building division or a. Well, to some extent, we do have a building division, but we don't employ architectural support and engineers and planners. And and things like that. So we don't, we don't have bandwidth beyond what. Let me say it this way, we don't have all of the expertise that we need, but it's also a matter of bandwidth where our numbers for staffing are decreasing. And we keep adding things to the list of of things we've got to do. So that's why consultants are helpful in that as well.
And I I just bring it up because I'm trying to figure out how we could accomplish this goal, but next Commissioner Bell, go ahead.
Oh, just following on a little bit from what Director Black just went through, as your very inexpensive climate change consultant. I would say that one thing that, you know, when I look at the goals. Considering the state of the of the natural environment immediately around Ashland, it seems like one thing which is a. A huge issue which I think we are not taking into consideration sufficiently is the. Is APRC's greenhouse gas footprint and its effect on the local environment. And so I I understand that, you know, the. Management of, let's say, small engines, for example, that APRC owns. Falls into several different categories at the same time, but it seems to me that for many reasons, one of which is that I think that our. You know, we are leaders of our community. We are, we are trying to set the standard by which other people sort of aspire to perhaps. That we should actually have a standalone greenhouse gas emissions inventory and mitigation goal and it would pick apart this goal that you've set up here. And so I, you know, while I don't object to the goal that you've set up exactly, I I think that it might be maybe more appropriate. And perhaps more. Maybe a better prioritization of our time and resources to have a standalone greenhouse gas inventory and mitigation goal. And I sent a goal by email to Director Black earlier and some and other commissioners know about this sort of a goal. In a general sense as well, but if you're interested, I can read either the whole thing to you if you're if you'd like or. Or go through it in some other form, or I could just sort of give you the general gist of it fairly expeditiously, hopefully.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so basically. There's four sort of categories to it and they're all more or less in the same format. The first one is inventory, all gas powered landscaping equipment. Plus any other non-passenger gas or diesel fueled equipment. In any, in other words, any engines that we have that aren't cars or trucks. Estimate their relative emissions and greenhouse gas pollution impact. Provide or come up with a cost estimate for replacing those things. My hope would be that we could set a target date for actually completing that. Task, which in my mind would be the end of the summer and then we could, you know, arrange a timeline for replacing those things based on their priority with the idea of. You know, going for the worst offenders that are the least expensive first. And I wasn't, my idea was not so much that we would have something that's excruciatingly detailed, but just something that is a working and functional list. That we could go through fairly, you know, mechanically, I guess. The next thing would be obtain a quote for a cover for the pool estimate the. So in other words, a quote for a cover for the Daniel, the future replacement of the Daniel Meyer pool with the idea that this would decrease. Water loss as well as the cost of heating the pool, then also, you know, go through and. Maybe more, you know, greater detail estimate the cost of heating the pool both with and without the cover. Come up with a lease cost plan and then there's, I would put a separate goal as far as the a plan for actually funding the pool. The third version of the same thing is inventory, the APRC owned passenger. Equipment, in other words, like cars, trucks and other things that people can ride in. And this again, assess their emissions, assess the cost of replacing them and then proceed with some sort of a timeline for doing that. And then the fourth and last thing would be a similar inventory of the structures that we own and the cost of heating them and how much it would cost to replace the heating of those structures. Again, you know, I think that this is, I mean, you know, I could give it in more dramatic or less dramatic ways. We're living through the sixth extinction. One of the things on the list of things to go extinct is people. Or, you know, it's just a high priority for a lot of the community, plus a lot of these things I think are potentially cost savings over time. But either, no matter how you look at it, I think that as far as I'm concerned, this is a high priority goal for for at least my portion of APRC's. Directorship. Thanks.
Right, I think Commissioner Lewis had a question and then I'll go to Commissioner Eldridge.
Yeah, I guess my comment follows along with Commissioner Bell's in that some of my worry is the things that were just mentioned. Will get slowed down if we're waiting for funding for the whole master. Slowed down if we're waiting for funding for the whole master plan. And so I could see a strategy that we. Separate out some of the ones that aren't. A huge consultant fees are huge, let's say considerable consultant fees. And something we could probably do in-house. We're not talking about needing engineers and we're not talking about it. It's pretty much like a pencil pushing. Powered implements we have, so it would at least give us. A an ability to gauge this sooner than later. We have to wait for for funding for some of this before we get it. And and Commissioner Bell and I were on the conservation subcommittee and, you know, that was. March was our last meeting of twenty twenty. And we were just starting to get into the exact things we were talking about, about asking staff to to kind of get it, give us. An inventory of what they actually had. And I I was kind of into zero. Zero waste is an important part to 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 throw in there too. And that's kind of a policy decision. It's not a huge money issue and we're not going to need consultants to do that. So we want to really do our due diligence on this reducing carbon emissions. And I think it's the city has taken this on as a task and we want to. Try to lead the rest of the community because that's where most of the carbons created is is the citizens of Ashland. And so if we can show them what we're doing and and sooner than later, I think. That would be helpful, helpful for me anyway.
Well, right here from Commissioner Eldridge first and then we'll get back to Director Black and see how we can dig. Dissect the goal for.
Yeah, thanks. So I I'm a little unclear as to whether these four areas have been identified as. You know, the the least cost, highest reward, highest reduction in emissions throughout the entire APRC. Like through what analysis did we come up with these four items? Is there anything, you know, because what my thought is, and and I may just not be aware of. Processes that have happened before I've arrived is that, you know, a comprehensive energy audit, including embodied energy or, you know, a complete carbon footprint. Will give us a much more holistic idea of actually where we should be prioritizing. And putting our energy towards in order to, you know, first get the low-hanging fruit or get the big, big reward, big carbon reduction for. For and and that's that's kind of what these these larger analyses do and can be useful for. So I'm just curious about how we came up with these four as the top priorities in our in our efforts.
Do you want Julian to speak quickly and then I'll turn it back to Michael?
Well, I I, yeah, I've been waiting to say something. I'd like to say something if that's okay. I I think, you know. When we're talking about goals, not I think, I I know, when we're talking about goals. We're trying to identify, you know, kind of overarching thing we're trying to accomplish. I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily spell out exactly how to accomplish it in the goal itself. I think there are objectives that that Commissioner Bell has stated that can be included underneath this goal. But I I, and I think this is speaking to what Commissioner Eldridge is saying. This, I think the goal should say state more. Unless the evaluation's already been done and we already know how to implement it, should be more along the lines of. Explore and come up with the plan to to accomplish the things that we want to accomplish as opposed to stating how to accomplish those things.
Commissioner Bell, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I don't object at all to the idea of having a more detailed, comprehensive plan to inventory our our total greenhouse gas emissions. But in the meantime, I can tell you just based on my last ten years of experience doing. Climate change work that these are where our emissions are. And I mean, there might be others, but these are the main ones. And in the meantime, while we're waiting for a more detailed and comprehensive assessment of our emissions, we can certainly get to work on, for example, replacing our landscaping equipment. Because not only is it very, not only does it generate a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. But it generates an enormous amount of ground-level pollution. It's also relatively toxic for the people that are actually using. The landscaping equipment, not to mention noisy and otherwise bothersome to the to people in Ashland who complain about exactly those things. So I'm all for the idea of a more detailed analysis. I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I mean, like I. It's a joke that I'm, or I I meant, I intend it to be a joke that I'm the unpaid consultant on climate change. It is not that I actually am a consultant on climate change by any means, but even so, I mean, these are the main offenders. There's not really many other offenders. So, you know, in the meantime, while we're working, while we're working on other things, I don't mind having a less precisely defined goal. But I think these are the high priority targets. And I do think that we should have a date that we. Plan to complete our inventory and cost analysis for, and I would say that it should be September of this year.
What about potentially moving this sub-letter D out into its own goal? And adding some of some of these sub objectives into into that. So that it, yeah, and I agree. I think I think I've been hearing from other commissioners that it's important enough that it should be on its on its own. And sort of separated from this long laundry list of of. Plans that need to and analyses that need to be done. That's just just one idea.
Why, what is it with item D? I mean, natural gas heating is a huge contributor.
I was just talking about four D is the environmental sustainability and implement implementation plan and the greenhouse gas inventory. So instead of having it within this A, B, C, D, E, F, G, pull it out and elevate it to the level of, you know, a. A number.
Pardon me, I misunderstood what you meant.
So, so I, yeah, I don't have a problem with doing that. That's the one that I thought would probably get pulled out. But I I want to just state, I, it was never intended that all of these would be done in succession. That we had hired one consultant to do them all and therefore they would be waiting for the the whole project to be done. That's why I listed they could be done together or independently. There's no problem at all if the commissioners agree separating four D out, which is environmental sustainability. And Commissioner Bell, I think one of the, one of the first objectives could be to. And I'm just going to use. Just a term here, but it, we will change it to whatever is more. Presentable, but evaluate the low-hanging fruit in in this project and and set and come up with a plan to. To accomplish some of those within a timeframe, but I think that. We should not set the timeframe at this time. But instead say, one of the first things we do is is get together and talk about all those things that could be done quickly and set a timeframe at that point. As opposed to to now, when we're focused more on a larger list, we need to get down and and really concentrate on this one. To decide when we can potentially accomplish those things.
Got a request from Commissioner Law and then Lewis.
Well, actually, I think that for me, where it is on this list, whether it's a sub. Sub or its own is really what's important to me. I I find either way, but what is important is the timeline because. If if we're really saying this is really important and we need to have it. You know, set up in such a way that that we get it, we get to it soon. And that, I think, is what. Anyway, that's what's important to me, and I think that's what's important to the community. I think, so however the goal comes out, I think we. Think we need to, if it means waiting a month or two months until we set it, set up a timeline, but we need a timeline and that timeline needs to be. Be sooner rather than later. And that's what I think is really the focus of, let's get going on this. This is the existential issue before us.
I think Commissioner Lewis possibly first and then Eldridge.
Yeah, and I think if if we. Consider the subcommittee committee, the conservation subcommittee would be helpful in working with staff and. Bringing these together and and getting that to the commission sooner than later would be would be, might be a strategy to.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. Commissioner Eldridge and then Bell.
Yeah, I I agree with all the sentiments. I would just point out that there aren't any timelines anywhere else within. We're talking about the timeline of the biennium. So I I think, yes, we need to put a timeline on it, but that not, doesn't necessarily belong in this document that we're working on. And then I would just say again, I I do think it it should be elevated to its own, its own item, even just to sort of show the public that it's. At the top priority instead of sort of buried in a sub-list. It just. It it feels better to me. That's my only rationale for that.
Okay, follow up, Commissioner Bell.
One last thing that I wanted to say about this, this item as a goal or this single sort of standalone goal is that. You know, the the replacing a gas-powered engine with an electric version of the same thing costs a certain amount of money. But effectively, it's also a carbon offset project. And it's possible, possible that it may be that we could set up this or that. Outside investors may have an interest in purchasing some or putting money into the replacement of these. Devices, because really it is, in a very literal sense, the carbon offset project. And it's possible that it could actually be brokered as such. And attract some funding to actually pay for these tasks. And I'm not even suggesting that there's any sort of arrangement. In process for having that kind of thing happen, but it seems that it has the potential to become a project along those lines. And, you know, it may not be as expensive as it might look at the outset. So that's maybe an additional reason to go forward with this.
So I, so I think, I didn't hear anybody object to separating it out, so I will go ahead and separate that out. I will come up with some objectives based on what we heard tonight and I'll I'll send those out. Well, I'll send all of these out within the next week. And so you'll have a chance to look at those and comment on those. But but yeah, I I think that we can. If if this gets prioritized by the commissioners, then it'll be prioritized. We'll start working on it. And then we can set up timelines, but my objection to a timeline is simply that. We haven't really evaluated the the aspects of implementation yet. And I think that. Establishing a timeline without having done that first is is a little bit of an issue. And then I agree with Commissioner Eldridge in that the timeline we're looking at is the biennium. And based on where this ranks in priority with the commissioners, which I'm gathering is going to rank pretty high. That would establish how quickly we get to work on it. So you're in control is what I'm saying.
So so you're going to break this out to to a separate goal? Is that what you're intending to do?
Yes, I I didn't hear any objections to that's going to do that.
Yeah, okay, good.
Appreciate it.
Very good. Carry on.
Okay. Okay, so the next one is our diversity, equity and inclusion goal. And it states, let me just move this. Investigate ways to improve diversity, equity and inclusion for both internal workforce and public access and services. With the help of a qualified DEI consultant, gather community input, define areas for improvement and implement action in alignment with the city's DEI. Policies and initiatives. This is one where I'm going to say we definitely need a consultant for this. It's it's really hard to self-diagnose yourself. Or to self-diagnose, I guess that's redundant to say self-diagnose yourself. But um, but yeah, I think we would, we would need someone to come in and and assist with with this one if it were to move forward.
Question? Commissioner Law, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm wondering if where the money would come for that consult. Would that be out of the operating budget?
Yeah, so now now this one, yes, it would be, and and we have some money built into. The potential for some of these to happen. Now. I would say that this one is probably one, one of the more important ones, but probably wouldn't cost as much. As some of the other analysis that we're looking at and master plans that we're looking at. I believe that, you know, we could, I'm not going to say a number right now, but I I believe that this one would be much more. Costs or the cost would be lower than looking at the entire system or environmental review and think and things like that. So.
Commissioner Lewis.
I know this is a high priority goal for the city itself. So is there any way we could coattail with this? It seems like, you know, we're we're a heart of the the city and so. If they're moving along and we're moving along parallel along with this, is that money well spent or is that? We want to make sure we're on the same page, all those, all those statements. So. Why should we be that much different than than the the city of Ashland and what they're going to do?
Right. So since that was a question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So you're right, the city is doing this and this is kind of our way of of of. Getting on board with that. The city has is creating a a committee, a DEI committee. And they're looking at all of the different departments. And while we're not technically a department. We do get money from the city and they want to see how we are implementing diversity, equity and inclusion. And we do things, we provide different services than what the city provides. Some customer service is the same. But we're also dealing with with groups of people recreating and there's lots of different things that we're looking at along those lines. And while we can piggyback on some things and we are already piggybacking where. The city is setting up trainings that everybody is going through, including us. This is more to look at our culture and the way that we provide services and the and the way that. The people we provide services to and being more specific about how we're doing it and what we can do as a group to be. Not only, it says right here, not only for our external. Clients and customers, but our internal customers and workforce as well. And that's, and that's, like I said, it's it's unique to us in that sense.
Commissioner Eldridge, you had a question?
Yes, I wanted to just sort of briefly open it up to discussion. In acknowledgement of the murder of Aiden Ellison and all the efforts that the community has gone. Has done to attempt to bring this say their names exhibit. Is that something that might be appropriate for us to put as a sub-objective? I don't know if APRC is at the at the point where we're saying, yes, this is definitely, I know it's moving forward. I wasn't sure if it might be something that we would want to consider calling out specifically. I think it would fall under that category as sort of like a public declaration of the APRC's values of DEI.
Commissioner Lewis.
On that note, I'm liaison for the Public Arts Commission and I've just been reading emails from Andy Stillman and. They're right on top of that as far as in discussion mode with some of the groups getting them together. So. We will definitely want to work with them because it it's going to be some form of art. And it could potentially be in the park. So we want to be fully involved from the beginning to the end. And so, I mean, I I have a Friday meeting at eight thirty and I think there's be some discussion there and. And so it's obviously an ongoing thing that's moving, it is moving along, but I I don't know what the timeline is going to be, but I'll I'll. Let you know. As it progresses on that end.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I had assumed that it would definitely be an APRC there at land or, but maybe that's not a a foregone conclusion.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's very preliminary right now, but obviously the what is out there now as art or statement. Has a certain ephemeral nature. So, you know, yeah.
Commissioner Law.
Actually, I'll wait till the discussion on on this goal is over.
And and, you know, I would just add that both Michael Black, myself and Rick Law to some extent, Commissioner Law. You know, we tried to get involved with the say their names early on and and try, you know, to be. Helpful and try to guide the process. And we were unsuccessful with. And uh, we were unsuccessful with um. Uh, you know, to t- trying to e- establish um. The direction possibly, not that we were trying to direct it, but to establish uh, what we could do with that. You know, at at first it was road art on the on the fence, but realizing that it's an important. It's a the important uh. Uh, there's an important message that's being made and we were trying to respect that, but also trying to um. Um, uh, you know, acknowledge the 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 importance of. The parkland and um, respecting uh, what people do and 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 whatnot. And uh, it it really wa- it it, we couldn't get in front of it, to be honest with you. So now um, luckily Commissioner Lewis is on the uh, on the uh, on the Public Arts Commission. And it seems to be somewhat more in their in their ball, you know, in their ballpark. Even though it's on our land and we should be involved with it. Um, it it seems to be it's been steered by the city to uh, Public Arts Commission. And uh, I'm sure Jim has something to say. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, and I think um, if I'm guessing, this is something that kind of has to play out with gathering community people. And also has some fairly significant legal issues that uh, that crop up about um, you know, First Amendment rights and things. So it's it like everything, you think, oh, this is shouldn't be simple. This is not going to be simple, but it's such very important to do. And we and uh, and everybody knows how government works, you know, if you're, if you get a real timeline and and people feel they weren't included along the way, that it all can come to grief. So uh, rather than guiding it, we probably just be want to be one of the players in it and understand that some of our properties might might be involved and uh, and and uh, consider that along the way too, you know.
Right, and I'll acknowledge Commissioner Bell, but I just want to say one thing that, you know, um. Nevermind, go ahead.
Those, I was just gonna say that it seems, you know, it falls somewhere, in my view anyways, it falls somewhere between what I think of as a goal and something that's within our administrative tasks. I mean, like, just this is totally technical and it doesn't relate to the the subject matter. But I mean, it's, I don't know that it's going to cost us anything to have a piece of artwork that recognizes the Black Lives Matter movement in the parks in a way. So I don't know whether it requires a full sort of level goal.
Yeah.
But by the same token, I am totally in support of having some, I don't know if it would be called monument or I mean, I don't know, some recognition of the Black Lives Matter movement. And you know, the say their names project somewhere in the um, APRC parks. I mean, for example, in the railroad park might be an uh, appropriate place. And that seems like it, because of the cultural importance, it might be a valid goal for that reason. Rather than that it's a project that we need to spend a lot of money on.
Right, you you know, I would just add on to that, it is um, I'm unclear that it would be beneficial to have it be part of a part or biennium goal. Cause I I think we're we're involved with it and it's it's moving forward and, you know, we will continue to be involved with it. So that would be my input. Commissioner La, did you want to say anything? Did you have your hand up?
If we're done with this, uh, I I'm not exactly sure. Uh, I I feel like there's not going to be a perfect place to bring this up, so maybe I'll just bring it up here and see where it goes.
Go ahead.
If we're, if we're done with the, are we done with this goal?
I I mean, are we okay with not particularly identifying say your names? Because we're involved with that and and just keep the goal similar to what it is?
With it housed within um, the, I I really, I guess I thought that APRC was take, was more involved and more of a leadership role in driving this project. And now I I appreciate all this uh, the feedback and information. I do, I also kind of wanted to get a handle on that. And yeah, I think it, I'm I'm perfectly okay with it not being called out and um, are playing the role that we are currently in as you described it. So I'm happy.
So I think I think we're good with with that. Commissioner Bell, are you okay with that? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner La.
Well, well, I I really, um, it this kind of goes back. I think this will finally relate to a goal we already talked about, but I may want to add something to. But one thing that bothered me about these uh, goals is there wasn't a goal uh, for Lithia, for Lithia Park. And um, what it says is um. Lithia Park plan is to process, uh, is in progress and will be forwarded to the commission, to the commissioners. No need to adopt a new goal that comes with it. Well, that's true, but that wasn't what our old goal was. Our old goal was to uh, complete the master plan and implement uh, the recommendation. So that's kind of just um, you know, kind of gone out, gone uh, by the wayside. And that is a bit troublesome. And and it isn't really consistent with the goal we're going to talk about soon, which is build East Main Park, which is way further along in terms of implementation than um. Um, Lithia Park uh, improvements are, and it's on there. But given all that, one thing that um, we could do, because I I feel like there's really a a a pretty critical need in Lithia Park that isn't being, isn't being addressed. And that is the lack of safety for pedestrians in particular and to lesser extent bicycles. Um, and that would be to um, include a goal under that master planning. That would say something like um. Where am I? Um, evaluate bicycle and pedestrian routes on APRC property and those leading to APRC prop. And those leading to APRC properties and identify areas of highest concern for safety and accessibility of users with intention of creating a plan of action to address deficiencies. And that that is a good master planning goal, in my opinion. Um, and it fits under that master plan. And what it does is, I mean, what's going to come up is Wimburn Way is going to be a a high priority. And then that gets us to what I think is really the one piece that we should be working on in this biennium for Lithia Park. I mean, there actually may be others too that are in progress like Frosty Fountain. This is the one safety one that really needs to be be looked at and this goal will allow us to uh, have it on our list. So I would like that added, at the very least, have that added to the master plan goal.
Director Black, you have any comments on that?
No, I think um, actually think it'd be a good thing to evaluate. And uh, I would, I would make sure that it's part of the master plan as we went along at some point. But I think calling it out uh, makes it so that as we go along and we, we are working with uh, groups and talking about bicycle and pedestrian safety. Uh, it's nice to be able to to show that um, we are, we are working on ours as well. And uh, you know, I I think it fits right in there with it, so.
Okay, so is there a Commissioner Eldridge? Go ahead.
Are we talking about putting this under um, like number four? Is that?
Yeah, yes. I think that's what we intend to grant under the.
It wouldn't necessarily be like an amendment to the Lithia Master Plan specifically. It would, okay.
Well, and and I think it, you know, there's a couple of ways to look at it. And I think, and I'm sorry, maybe I, maybe I misheard, but I I would propose that it be more general to where that we're we're looking at that all bike path stuff and not just Lithia Park.
That is what I, that's what I wrote. I I didn't, I I I talked about after I read the goal, which is general. Because actually, the other thing that comes up here is something else we've talked about recently, which is uh, the connection uh, between homes and the central bike path. So you know, that's another one that's that's very topical and would be included. So no, like, the way I read it was uh, evaluate bicycle and pedestrian routes on APR properties and those leading to APR properties.
Yeah.
And then.
To answer your question, Commissioner Eldridge, the the specific one of Lithia Park might be addressed in the master plan. But but we have this bigger issue of looking at everything. Um, and some of this, some of the things that might come out of it might be covered in other plans as well. But um, but I I think it'd be a great thing to add to the list of of evaluations.
I agree. I support it.
Commissioner La.
Yeah, I I again, I, we've, we've had of the goal of improving Wimburn Way. Been on our goal list for a long time. In fact, at one point, we even had money set aside for it. Is we now have a Lithia Park Master Plan that gives us some real clear um, direction and ideas for how to actually implement it. So I just think it's time to to get moving on that, although I think there's still a little, you know, it's not exactly what the road, we haven't got the exact roadmap yet. But we should have one fairly soon. And once we get it, uh, we should be working to implement this, this very high priority safety issue. Um, and accessibility, it 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 really makes it safe for dog walkers to legally go through the heart of of Lithia Park uh, um, in a safe manner.
Yeah.
Okay, so I I I'm just gonna do a quick check in. So we had a pretty full agenda for tonight. We're not even halfway through the goals discussion. And it, you know, and and this is ultimately important, but maybe not more important than budget and capital improvement. But I just want to, let's just take that, keep bear that in mind as we, as we move forward. And I don't want us to skip through or or not take um, input from from commissioners. But um, let's just be uh, aware of that, I think.
I think we've gotten through all the ones that commissioners will have comments on.
Okay.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding. I. All right, so let's see.
Number six.
Number six. Explore and implement as funds allow capital improvements that would reduce long term maintenance costs with a goal for the improvement to pay for themselves. This is a goal that we've had in the past. I've added two objectives to that. Um, replace the main irrigation central computer system. Um, this would be important because it would help us manage water better, detect leaks and um, manage water better. So that's uh, that reduces water usage. Um, transition from city water to T I D or trans or talent irrigation district uh, or use other water rights where applicable for irrigation purposes. And uh, this is something I think is really important and we've actually had as a goal previously as well. And we are working with the city as we speak to um, come up with a plan for converting Hunter Park to T I D. Because they are already converting the adjoining cemetery to T I D. So it's one of those strike while the iron's hot or two birds with one stone type of thing. So that's why Hunter Park will probably be the first one that we convert. And um, and then, and yeah, I won't go into all the details, but um, any comments on that?
Well.
Here, here.
Yeah, and I would just say that the the conversion to T I D has been a, has been a long term project, which we we've implemented in other parks. I mean, Lithia Park was not always um, use utilizing T I D. And uh, so I I think it, I think it's just uh, another step in the, in a, in the, on the road that we've been, you know, going down to try to utilize um, T I D as well as the golf course, you know, in in different areas that are uh, heavy water user.
Yeah, for sure. Um, we we definitely have a lot of properties already that are on T I D. We have more water rights that we can use and the the goal would be to take advantage of all the water rights that we have with T I D.
Ju- just to clarify, uh, I I wouldn't use the word T I D. I would use um, um, irrigation waters. Because some of the of potential systems have nothing to do with T I D, for example, for Ashen Creek Park.
Yeah, and and that's, that's why it says other water rights, but if it's clearer just to say irrigation water, I I can make that change.
Okay, thank you. Number seven.
Okay, so number seven is build the East Main um, Park. Now, um. The the thing on this one, and Commissioner La brought this up a a minute ago. Um, this project is underway already, but not the building of it. The the, what's underway right now is the design portion of it. So I I still do think it's um, it's something that uh, you're you're showing that. You know, we've got the money to do it. We've got the design underway. Your intent is to move forward and build that uh, for that community. Uh, once the design is done, so.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Julie.
I'm just concerned if I don't vote for this, does that mean that I don't want to do it? Or that it will not go ahead?
Well, when we end up voting, it'll be, we'll be doing um, kind of a a democratic voting system where, you know, you'll have, you'll be able to put your votes on the different things and we'll tally up the votes. And if it ends up being one of the lower ones, it may not, it may not be a highly prioritized goal. But at the time when we're done with the East Main Street design, you could look at it again and and reprioritize it. So I I I don't think it's gonna, not, I don't think anything that happens here would change the fact that we are already under contract with design. If that's, if that's what you're asking.
You know, plus, no, no goal, no, no, none of these goals are going to fall off the list. If they, if, if they don't have support, I mean, they're gonna, I I I really think this list is a comprehensive list of what we intend to move forward, you know, and you know, if it scores low, I still think it's, it's got, it's valid to be on the list.
Well, and my concern is the money is already dedicated. The project is going to go ahead regardless if I, whether or not I vote for it. So I don't know what the point of voting for it is.
You you've got a point, so. One way of looking at it, another way of looking at it is saying, well, you didn't even prioritize it. Why do you have all that money dedicated to it, you know? So I mean, there's, there's different ways to look at this and so.
Been a high priority in past, in the past biennium, you know. Yeah.
It just seems to me that the ball is rolling. I don't know. It's like a, it is a project, not a goal. We're just doing it. I mean, I don't know, this has been something that I've brought up several times. You already know what I think, but.
Yeah.
Anyhow, you know what I think.
All right, um, install basketball court at Ashland Creek Park in the gravelled area with striping for multiple uses, including pickleball. You know, and I, I I might suggest that we change this one to um, complete the master plan for Ashland Creek Park, including um, installing basketball and not be so specific about the area. We know where the area we're talking about, but um, and you've modified, the commissioners have modified the master plans. The master plan actually now is to have basketball in that gravelled area. Unless I'm forgetting something, I do believe we came to the commission and you did vote to change that.
I I'm not sure we have.
Okay, well, I can, I'll look into it, but um, I would, I mean, is there any objection to changing that to um, complete master plan included? Including um, basketball court instead of making it really specific to one um, action item?
Go ahead, Commissioner Lewis.
Uh, I just don't want it to fall off the list and how we, how we describe it is one thing. But uh, uh, we just got hoops back on our backboard, so I'm thrilled. You know, it's like incremental steps, baby steps, maybe uh, we could shoot a few hoops at some point. But uh, yeah, I just don't want to see it falling off. Uh, it's fairly small thing. And it was on our, our um, originally on our master plan for Ashen Creek Park. But uh, the the location has changed and if it changes again, fine, as long as we um, fulfill it, that's my hope.
Right, Commissioner La.
Well, if we haven't changed the master plan, then I I I'd like to see it just stay the way it is. But if we have changed the the master plan, then I think changing the language would make sense. But um, yeah, and and the other thing I wanted to say is, uh, this becomes a little higher priority in that we just lost the basketball courts at Hellman. So that part of town has one less uh, uh, basketball opportunity that it used to have. So to me, that makes this a little more important.
Yeah, and pickleball courts too.
Yeah, and I I I'm just gonna leave it. So.
Okay.
All right, uh, create a small pocket park, pocket neighborhood playground park in the vicinity of Oak Knoll Clubhouse. This has been on the books for a long time. We actually have this designed. Um, but in order to to um, inform how I allocate money in the C I P, I think it's important that this is on here and so you can give me direction of whether this. And so you can give me direction of whether this is still a priority to get this playground up there, so. Mitigate fire vulnerability on all APRC lands, and if discovered, there is a large volume of different mitigation work. Of mitigation work. I don't know why it says different. Explore funding to support fire suppression.
I saw Commissioner Lawton and Commissioner Bell.
They mitigate fire vulnerability on all APRC lands and explore funding to support fire suppression.
Okay, I like that's straightforward.
Commissioner Bell.
It's well, to even change it further, it sort of seems like it could be divided into two things that already exist. I mean, we already are planning on or proposing, I guess maybe it's a separate call, but there's in one of our first goals. We were proposing to. Build the city appropriately for the maintenance work that we do on open spaces. It seems like that fire mitigation would be part of that. And the various different efforts that we're going to be making to. Resolve our funding, our funding issues kind of cover the second part of it, but.
Yeah. So we we maintain our our properties with our own resources, and the city maintains theirs with their own resources. So so that's why it would be on all RP A or PC, whatever. Yeah.
Okay.
Good job at Verdi Village, Dean. Nice job down there.
Yeah, we are in process right now of mitigating a lot of vulnerable fuels as we speak. And most of those are on on parks land, and we are paying for those ourselves. But we are, we have partnered with the city and we'll be working with them on their lands as well. Because this, as you point out, this is a bigger issue than just just Ashland Parks and Recreation.
Terrific work there. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. So number 11, improve public aquatic recreation and competitive options in Ashland. I won't read the whole thing. This is basically the same goal as last time, which is that we continue to work on getting a new pool. And that at a minimum, we keep the old pool open until we start construction on the new one.
Very good. Don't see any questions on that.
Okay. Continue to work with the City of Ashland, Chamber of Commerce and other organizations to promote tourism and outdoor recreation. And and this one was, this one was more of a, as I saw it anyways, more of a assist the chamber whose responsibility this already is. But also work to make our parks more and our trails and things like that more. I guess. Appropriate for bringing in those those organizations and tourism. And I I think less Commissioner Eldridge had some comments on this one.
Yeah, Michael Black and I had a Director Black and I had an interesting conversation today because I've been thinking about this goal a bit. And I I wonder if it would be useful to better define what what role APRC might play in sort of supporting this foundation of. You know, it's not necessarily in our wheelhouse to promote outdoor recreation or tourism. But rather to define streamline whatever processes might be might need to happen in order for that infrastructure and those trail systems to. To be worthwhile and for people to the community and for people visiting to enjoy them and to recreate on them. And in my mind, that would partially include the MOU that was previously discussed between the city, the city and APRC. Because APRC continues to take on more and more responsibility for recreational trail use and new trail or trail alteration applications. As well as determining insurance liability requirements, say, from folks that I've heard and AWTA and RVNBA. This there's there's several problems. One is just a lack of clarity of who what the process is for planning events, activities, concerts, races. Any of these wonderful things that contribute to our community. They're they're very difficult. They're kind of tied up in red tape. They get batted around between city council, Forest Lands Commission, APRC. So I think there is really a need to sort of define and clarify that process for people and organizations in the community that want to bring. Things that really bring this culture and this town to life. So I don't know exactly how to write that. I said. To and and there's been discussion within the FLC as well to have APRC take on that role and declare help to clarify that role within the community. So I guess my proposal is that we add a couple of sub objectives to that. That one would be to sort of streamline and clarify the process, the per the application and or permitting process for activities, events. And and I don't know if this will be a separate one, but another one would be this new desire of the Forest Lands Commission to have APRC. Be in charge of the new and alteration of trails all within the Ashland watershed, that application and that process, as well as all. Recreation user issues, which has sort of been batted around between multiple places. So we're talking about potentially clarifying, but also potentially taking on a lot more responsibility in terms of those issues. Where it's a little bit seems like maybe it's been a bit of a hot potato on some of these, some of these processes. So I guess I could. And then the last one is this issue of liability insurance that I'm investigating because they're currently, in order to have any sort of event or activity on in Ashland city property. You need to have $2 million of insurance liability. And I believe that in Jacksonville and in other cities in Oregon, that liability requirement is actually lower. This is a it's a huge obstacle to say small business owners, maybe. Someone who wants to start a a private trail running coaching business or mountain biking coaching. These sorts of things can be prohibitive, so I would propose that we look at that. So. I could draft something or we could talk about it. I don't know. I just feel like as it as it stands now, the goal is sort of vague. And it doesn't really state how APRC would actually be involved in doing this.
Okay. Can I can I just make a comment on the the insurance really quick? Because it is an important issue, and since it was brought up, I'd like, and I did find out some more information since we talked to Commissioner Eldridge. And I'd like to just give that information since since there might be a question out there with people even watching or who may listen to this later. That there it's true, there could be other cities that require less liability insurance. But what I found out is, for the most part, they're self insured. And so they make the decision on their own of how much liability they would they would require from people who are. Are are doing things within their system. So they're their own insurer, and they they decide how much risk that they want to accept. In the cases of most cities, we're insured by CIS. And they they dictate how much insurance we we need to require people who participate or charge for services on our properties. Not participate. If you're doing something for free, you don't need insurance. But if you're charging for services, how much insurance you would have to have. There are some situations where it can be less than 2 million, but generally, if there's if there's any risk at all associated with it, we're required to get 2 million. And that is because of the Oregon tort claims limit, and the city can be responsible for up to $2 million. For potential injuries or anything damages from any kind of activities that take place. So what we're doing when we're asking for insurance is we're saying, we'd love to welcome you onto our property and and let you use it to for your benefit to potentially even make money. But you have to indemnify us so that the citizens of Ashland in potentially don't have a financial liability by by allowing you to do this. And that's dictated again, like I stated, from the the CIS city insurance or county insurance service. And I just checked that out today. We can still put it as something to look into, but why? Because it's hanging out there, I just wanted to address it really quick. So so it doesn't appear as if the the $2 million is arbitrary, and that's where it's coming from, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's helpful, but it also, I mean, in light of the conversation we had, it's, of course, there are tennis instructors out there that don't have $2 million of liability insurance, making money and teaching tennis on our tennis courts. And yet.
Unauthorized, though. I just want to throw in there unauthorized, so just just to put that out there.
Right, yeah. And of course, you know, some activities are. Absolutely has to be usually run through permitting and application. And I know Ashland Devo and RVNBA are bending over backwards to try to do everything right and running into a lot of these obstacles that other people can sort of do, take advantage of unauthorized. But yeah, I guess I would I would like to investigate that a little further. But I think one of the biggest problems that I see is just the lack of clarity and the sort of bureaucracy and some of the just. The unclear process for for applications and for holding activities, events, et cetera, on on APRC and APRC maintained land.
Well. Commissioner Lewis.
Just a comment on promoting tourism and way back when they were developing the plan for North Mountain Park. There was talk of we could have tournaments come to town and and it could be this big deal. And I think it was it was not looked at as something that that the community wanted. Because it involved increasing the parking area dramatically and promoting tourism. In some ways, there's a lot of community people who think we in the old days, we had a tourist glut actually in the summer. And the real promotion would be how do we get people to come to our town in the winter, really? We'd love to have a lot more activity there, but it seems like most of the activity is is on the summer months and tournaments. And, you know, we had the big owls and and but, you know, since this pandemic, God, we have to revise everything. We have to reconsider, and I think I was answering the questions that the the mountain bike group asked for the potential candidates. And I said, well, this is something we should probably rethink, you know, this is that now that we're in the the new this new era, we have to look at. Tourists as not just a given, and it's it's just always gonna be. So I think to to discuss that, we've had some good mountain biking. Series, I guess, the Revenge of the Siskus and things like that, you know, that we pulled those off. So I think it was years ago, also, Men's Journal came out with an article about Ashland, and it said. Oh, yeah, you can go mountain biking on some great trails in the morning, and you're sitting watching great Shakespeare in the evening. And they said, and the weed isn't bad either. So it was it was kind of one of these interesting articles that somebody wrote and got into the to the to the Men's Journal. And so, you know, we're kind of on the map for for this outdoor recreation, a certain amount. But I'm I'm I think it's important that we reevaluate all that and and see what we can do to be part of the team.
I just want to have two quick responses to that. One, the best trail running and the best mountain biking in Ashland is in spring and fall, really. And and you can do both year round, so it is potentially a year round. Both of which our trails are amazing all year round, and actually the worst in the summer in my personal opinion, but of course, still usable. And the other thing I want to mention is that there are a lot, there are families and it's sort of the the demographic of this town is changing. And I see the trail system very much as I see Mount Ashland as a place that's primarily for the community, but that brings some money and generates some economic benefit as well. But really, Mount A is ours, right? It's our community and it's our it's our place where we ski. And of course, in order to stay alive, it attracts is starting to attract more and more folks from Northern California, et cetera. So I think and I believe that RVNBA is trying to frame it and has worked a lot with Mount Ashland to kind of have that same outlook. Where it's really about the community, but in order to sustain itself and to sustain the community, to become this world class place where tourists also enjoy coming.
Great, thanks for that.
So I also just want to point out really quick that we we get a lot of credit for the BLM and Forest Service also turning down people and and making it hard to go through their processes. So we're all we all work together, but sometimes it's not just APRC or the city. It's also some of these federal agencies as well, so.
Yeah, if it's possible to somehow coordinate with the for national with Forest Service in these sorts of issues, that you're right. It's that's a huge problem, because of course, when I when you're riding or or running or having an event, you are often passing through multiple lands of multiple managers. And that can be frustrating.
Yeah. Well, I if if there's no objection, I would just ask Commissioner Eldridge to send that wording to me, and I will. I'll include it for consideration going forward.
Sure.
Sounds great.
Okay, back to the grind. I think this is the last one, actually.
13.
But I do have the other items that I had put on as potentially not needing a goal. I actually do have those on for discussion after this one, so we can still discuss those. Work with local partners, including ASD, Action School District and Southern Oregon University, to obtain agreements for mutual use of facilities, including school gyms for recreation leagues or open play during non-school times and during smoke events. This is this is an ongoing goal as well. We just added Southern Oregon University's university to that. And we stated including, so it's not exclusive to just these two groups. We could be working with many other groups if they have facilities available, including, for instance, the YMCA, so. Okay. All right, so.
Just one comment. Friday, I believe at 1:30. Well, no, not Friday, but coming up is a recreation subcommittee meeting that we also have let lapse during this pandemic. And so there'll there'll be a lot of points that we're going to be discussing there, working with the rest of SOU and the school district and and those issues too. So I'm kind of excited to get back in it in that arena as well, so.
Great. Perfect. Okay, there you go, Director Black.
Okay, so on the goal housekeeping, I actually, Commissioner Lawton, I talked earlier and I erased this one. Forget about the the top one. We've already discussed that. But the other goals, I'll just draw your attention to here, and this isn't the goal that Commissioner Lawton had proposed. This is the one that I was talking about. I think his was much more succinct and to the point, and I I would go with that one. The other goals, and I just want to make sure, you know, different people have different points of view on this. But complete the Lithia Park master plan and implement. I I feel like it's already underway, and the implementation will become a priority once you adopt the master plan. In my opinion, that's that's how you say we're going to implement the master plan is by going forward and then adopting it. Commissioner Lawton had a question.
Yeah.
No, it's not really a question. Well, I guess it is. I don't see the difference. I I just see the logic being. Turned around with the East Main. I mean, the same argument for including East Main is the same argument for including Lithia Park master plan. So it seems like either they both should be excluded or they both should be included. And and the goal that's written here is the plan's in process. Well, that's true, but the implement the the earlier goal, the one that's been deleted, said to implement to to complete the the planning process and begin implementing. That's what the goal said. And I think that that goal should be included, and what I would say is complete review of Lithia Lithia Park master plan. Bring before commissioners for approval, prioritize improvements, and then begin implementing the highest priority improvements.
So are you suggesting that this be added? So are you suggesting that this be added to the list of goals?
Correct. I I I just think it's so it's it's so important that we we just need to have it. It it's been on the goal list for years. We haven't completed it. We haven't allocated money for it. So if we take it off the list, that does. Then it's not on our goal list. And yes, it's it'll we approve a plan and you could say, well, we approve a plan, therefore moves forward. But then you refer to the goals that it's not on our goal list. To me, that doesn't make sense.
Commissioner Bell.
I would say that something that for which we don't have any money and we don't actually have a plan is definitely a goal.
Completing the plan. So is it still a goal?
No.
I think it's just a it's a project underway. I mean, I wouldn't, if it were a medical situation, I would not list it as a goal. I would say that it is being done. And it isn't really a goal.
But you didn't object to the East Main. East Main you is on the list.
Yeah, well, he said he might not vote for it, though.
No, I I think it's I think it's a project that's, I mean, again, I don't want to waste a lot of our time with diversions of definitions and various different things. But it seems like a goal is something that does not yet have funding and for which there isn't currently a plan. East Main has most of its funding or maybe all of its funding and there's basically a plan. It's a project that's underway. It's not really a goal, in my opinion.
But again, I I don't get it. How we say we have funding for it. Yes, we have a few hundred thousand dollars, but that Lithia Park Master Plan. Do we implement everything that would be multimillion dollars? We do not have funding for for that plan. We have funding for a very small part of the plan.
Right, it's a hundred-year plan. You know, it wasn't, but I I mean, if you want to add it to the list, I think we should just add it to the list then. Unless unless someone objects to it. You know, Commissioner wants to add it to the list, just like Commissioner Eldridge wants to reword the the last goal, let's just add it to the list.
For adding it. Lithia Park. The crown jewel. Let's add it.
All right, and you can vote for it or not, I I think, you know.
I I just think that's a solution to this.
The collaborate with Ashland Soccer Club to explore ways to maximize soccer fields. I I don't think that's a goal. I think that's an action. And I think that we can do that without having to to dedicate an entire goal to that. I mean, that could be that could be a goal of the of the Recreation Committee. So.
Somehow that should be communicated to, you know, to the staff that 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 would be on the agenda for that to the Recreation Committee.
Yeah. Are are you okay with having the Butler Parazzi prioritization come in the master plan of Lithia Park as opposed to prioritizing it outside of the master plan? And just not having a that Butler Parazzi found as its own goal or even as an objective under the master plan and just letting the master plan go forward?
Commissioner, and then I have a comment too.
It it actually, it does have a funding source, so. I mean, it 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 really is not dependent on being set up as a goal because it it the foundation apparently has money. So it's it's really quite a ways along compared to anything else in Lithia Park.
So my comment to that would be just if it if it somehow showed up in our goals, it would be easier for the. For the Parks Foundation, because the Parks Foundation has some money, but they don't have all the money. But they're actually one of the goals of the foundation is to place the the fountain as a priority for fundraising. And I somehow somehow I think that. A reflection of the APRC goal on Butler Fountain would benefit that effort. Maybe if it just gets put in with. With the Lithia Park Master Plan. You know, just just for. Just for identification purposes.
Okay, yeah.
I I I think it might be simpler just to put it as its own goal.
It's up to you guys, however you want.
Yeah.
But but actually, I guess in a way it's an objective, so maybe it does maybe it does make better sense with the park master plan.
Just just identify it specifically in the Lithia Park Master Plan.
Under that goal?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
I hesitate to even suggest this, but does it make sense under Lithia Park Master Plan to have the fountain and the low-angle trail? And all of these things that are Lithia Park that are sort of salted and peppered throughout or no? Keep it the way it is.
In this case, I think, you know, because this is a feature of Lithia Park, current feature that we're trying to, you know, basically restore and and fund.
It's different. Okay.
I I think we've already identified that the low-angle trail probably where it's best suited.
Okay.
That would be my inclination.
Right, and the last one is complete the Japanese garden. I don't think you need a goal for us to complete the garden. It's going to get completed, so.
It's happening.
Yeah, I mean, it has been a goal in the past, which I think was very important to to say why we're we're working on this and putting staff time towards it. But it's underway. It's it's happening. And if we didn't, I mean, it's it's going forward, so.
Right.
Okay. All right, so I will work on revising these goals and getting them back out to you for your individual review. And then you can respond directly back to me if you're see anything that was talked about that wasn't addressed or have any other questions. And I have Commissioner Bell's information. I have Commissioner Lawrence's information and then Commissioner Eldridge, if you can just send me. That information that you brought up tonight, then I'll I'll get that added.
Commissioner Bell had a comment or question?
Just a question. So for our next meeting, will be we actually voting on these calls at that time? Is that the plan?
Yeah, y'all have to get back to you on the process of of voting and how we're going to accomplish that. But it's usually something that happens outside of a a regular meeting, so. I'll I'll we'll work on that as staff and we'll get you back some information. But the idea is by by next month at this time, we are prioritizing the goals or you are prioritizing the goals. However, that's.
So I don't I don't think we'll be voting on them at the next meeting, to be honest. But we we should have the the plan for how we're going to prioritize the goals so that we can, like Michael said, so that we can have those adopted by next month. By May.
Yeah, whenever perhaps if you might, when you send us the list of the of the total number of goals that we're going to be voting on, maybe you could also send us how many votes you think we're likely to have?
You mean individually? So do I? No. So the way we usually do it is.
You, one.
Wait, we have a system that we've used previously where you have.
How many years you've served on the.
Yeah, yeah, where you have some some mega dots and some regular dots. And I'll I'll go over that at a different time. There's actually been some discussion about potentially doing something a little bit different. So I so, yes, I'll I will be giving information about how we vote, but all commissioners will have equal voting. And at the end, we're hoping that it will we'll be able to get a good understanding of of where everybody stands, what actually is supported. And what is less supported? Actually, what is really supported, what's less supported? So.
Priorities.
Yeah.
So that that'll be that'll be the process moving forward with the goals.
Okay, so. Should we? Can I just move forward?
Yeah, just move into budget review discussion.
Okay, so this chart in front of you here is is our revenues over time. And I wanted to point out a couple of things on this. So. The biggest revenue source is our property tax, this blue darker blue here, that's the majority. And this is seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and so on. These two years haven't happened yet. These are the two proposed years. But as you go forward, you can see there's some other items that creep in there as far as revenue goes, like the carryforward balance. For the past several years, we've had to use our reserve funds in order to make ends meet. And that's continuing into the next biennium was biennium as well, biennium as well. Some of the other items, food and beverage taxes, generally, those are just going directly to. CIP, so you won't see them in any of these years, but surprise, I'm going to talk about this down here in a few minutes. And grants, we we generally get some grants that come in for operating. Operating transfers in from CIP, which is actually food and beverage dollars, but it's categorized differently. You can see that in a couple of places. Oh, wait, it's this one, I think. See that that color there? We've used it a few times throughout the years, but it's getting to be more and more that we're using it. And then miscellaneous revenues and interest that we get from investments and things like that. And when you look at this as numbers, this is what it looks like. So seventeen, eighteen going forward to, let's take the the current year that we're in right now. So we we were, we had to move three hundred and five thousand dollars a year from our ending fund balance into operations. And each year of the last biennium, the biennium we're in now, I'm sorry. This five million, three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars is relative to. A dollar eighty-nine of a thousand dollars of assessed property value for every thousand dollars of assessed property value. And then all of these are the miscellaneous charges and things like that that we have. The biggest one here includes recreation rentals, you know, for space that we rent and maintenance agreements, like what we charge the city for maintaining their properties. As we as we go into the next year, some of these are changing. We're projecting less revenue in recreation and and other things bring in, and you've already seen this. In fact, you've approved a budget that shows this. We're looking at a dollar eighty-nine of assessed property values per thousand of assessed property values, which is five million, five hundred fifty-two thousand. And we're moving six hundred and fifty thousand per year forward to from our ending fund balance to make ends meet. The rest of these, this one in particular, four hundred and thirty-five thousand a year is being moved in from food and beverage to also help make ends meet. And we've had this discussion, you, I think you're aware of that. What's different is this number here, and that's food and beverage taxes. And what the city is proposing in the budget going forward, that is actually in front of the the full budget committee right now. Is that one hundred percent of food and beverage be dedicated to Ashland Parks and Recreation? And the reason why they would do something like that is because it makes sense for one and and their point of view. And I I think it makes sense in my point of view as well, and I'll explain a little bit about that. But this is a dedicated funding source. Food and beverage is dedicated. If it was dedicated all to us, it would be completely within the commissioner's discretion of how to use it, and it wouldn't be a fluctuating number. It'd be a hundred percent of the entire food and beverage monies would come to Ashland Parks and Recreation. Now, to explain, it it doesn't mean that it would be extra money. And we wouldn't have to continue to use like the six hundred and fifty thousand per year to make ends meet. This would just replace some of the property tax that we're already getting. So if you look at the item right above, they have subsequently reduced the general fund. Amount that we get from property taxes because of the money that we would get from food and beverage taxes. Now, this is their proposal. I I see there's already a question, so.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, just a a word that Special Black used that I'm going to question, that is that it wouldn't fluctuate. Actually, I think that's one of the reasons why the city wants to do this is because. Food and beverage does fluctuate and we, if not being as critical as fire and and police, can probably weather. Food and beverage going up and down better than than these other critical agencies can. And property taxes tend tends to be fluctuate less. And so I think that actually it does fluctuate, but I think the point is. We we still should be getting the same amount from overall from revenue with the property tax and the food and beverage as we did before.
Can I can I clarify something really quick? I I was referring to the percentage won't fluctuate where right now, going from two dollars and nine cents per thousand to a dollar eighty-nine per thousand is a fluctuation. And the percentage of funds that we receive from property tax. If if we go forward with this, we would always get the hundred percent. And whatever the fluctuation was, you're right, we would deal with that in the total number. But over time, food and beverage has been a very secure source of income, even during the pandemic. It's been it's produced more than what we thought it would, and the federal government is even reimbursing us for money that was lost during the pandemic. As a result of of lost taxes because people weren't eating out. Sorry.
So that circled number, the two million dollars, is that that's the city's projection on what food and beverage would be? In twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes, and and there's still some things to work out here, like like, first of all, I don't know if that number represents seventy-five percent or one hundred percent of food and beverage. Because it shouldn't represent more than seventy-five percent because we're already getting twenty-five percent. And I I I do need to clarify that. Tara and I are going to clarify that. But anyways, there's a, I I I have to say, I think this is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just want to then say, so so basically, the the circled number above that two million is just a backfill number. That the city is trying to make your proposed budget whole, and it doesn't represent any dollar per thousand at all.
It doesn't right now, but what? So it doesn't right now, but what the city's proposing is that. That if we move forward with this, you know, per the goal of the Parks Commissioners to have a dedicated funding source. We would have a dedicated funding source with food and beverage, but they would also dedicate a certain amount of property taxes. That would be belong to Ashland Parks and Recreation as well, not a dollar amount, a percentage of property taxes or a millage. And that would change every year as well. That would fluctuate every year as well. So so what we're heading towards is actually closer to a dedicated funding source. And again, I'll state, it's not to the extent that it solves all our financial problems. It just makes it so so at least our our funding source, the current funding level is dedicated and it won't reduce any more than it already has.
Right, so had Commissioner Juan and Bell, I didn't see who came first, but. Commissioner Bell, why don't you go first and then Commissioner Juan?
Oh, well, if things are set up this way in the future, then that becomes a fairly strong argument for Commissioner Eldridge's idea of. You're working with the Chamber of Commerce to promote tourism. And advance our, you know, that component of our activities.
Yeah. Commissioner Juan?
Um, yeah, that chart's not up in front of us now, but that.
I'll bring it back.
The way I look at that would mean that for the year, for the next biennium, for the first year of the next biennium. We would have to receive. Six hundred, about twenty percent more property tax than we would in twenty-two, twenty-three, so twenty-three, twenty-four. In order to maintain our our funding level, we need twenty percent more property tax. Is that how you understand it, Director Black?
I I'm not sure I follow.
Well, in the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget, there's six hundred and fifty thousand listed from ending fund balance. We don't have anymore any fund balance.
Right, you're right.
So for the next time, we're going to have have to have a twenty percent increase in property tax. Is that being talked about? Is that understood?
No, no, this is not going to resolve our financial issues. This is only making it so that our financial issues won't get worse than they already are. This is only making it so that our financial issues won't get worse than they already are. Because we have a dedicated funding source, we still have to figure out how we're going to make up more like a million dollars a year. So that we don't have to keep taking from food and beverage and that. Nonexistent ending fund balance after twenty two, twenty three. So so but it's not, it's not going to come from property tax, most likely. Like, I think that, well, that's an option, but. You know, with all the, all the departments that are fighting over. That pot of money, I I think we end up losing out.
Right. Commissioner Eldridge first, then Lewis, then Bill. Go ahead.
I apologize if Director Black, you already mentioned this, but. So the the city council proposed source of funding through food and beverage taxes, that in any way codified or guaranteed to. Last for a certain number of years beyond the biennium, or it's just it could change?
Yeah, so. So I have, you know, this is something that that I think is worth pursuing and. And I'll get into your question here in a second, but it's in this list of things here. I think it's worth pursuing because it is a dedicated funding source. And right now, we don't have a dedicated funding source. Food and beverage has been pretty consistent, but as you point out, it's not permanent. It it does, it only lasts another nine years. So these are the conditions that I would say, if we're gonna, if the commissioners are going to get on board with this. And say, yes, this is something that we we support. I think that at the very least, and you may come up with more, at the very least. Twenty five percent of food and beverage that we're already getting, we continue to get, and it's not counted towards operation. It's it's for major maintenance projects and new projects, but that's at the commissioner's discretion. But that's that, that's money you're already getting, so they're, they can't give us that twice. Then seventy three percent of the food and beverage tax that would be coming in. Would be used for operations at the commissioner's discretion. Again, if you would decide how. The seventy three percent gets used, and the reason why seventy three and not seventy five is because the city keeps two percent for managing. For collecting all of the funds and all the overhead that that comes with collecting the funds and then dispersing them to us. Commissioner Law.
Commissioner Lewis first, and then Commissioner Bell, and then Wong. Go ahead, Jim.
So I guess the sun setting of it in twenty thirty, I think it is, or. Whatever it is that should at least be considered, it it seems like a great short term. Solution. But and how many taxes ever go away, we can all discuss that, but. But still, it is something that needs to be approved by the voters every twenty years, I believe.
Yeah, so so that's. Most likely, this whole thing will get referred to the voters anyways, just to change the percentage. So I think it would be wise for the commissioners to say, well, we don't want, we don't want to take on a. A nine year source. I mean, we need to at least have another ten, make it twenty years at least. But but you can also talk about making it permanent. I don't know if that's, if that's really something you want to go for. But I would suggest to at least extend it ten years, or at least put it to the voters to see if they'd be willing to extend it ten years. And that, so that's one of the items that I had as well.
Right. Commissioner Bell?
I don't, I have no comment in this guy.
Okay, and then Commissioner Wong?
Um, yeah, the question I'm wondering is, is the numbers you showed us, Director Black. Are they, are they including ninety eight percent of food and beverage going? In that two million, or is it seventy three percent that makes up that two million?
It's supposed to be seventy three percent. I'm just going to say that. We we're still looking into it to make sure that they didn't double count the twenty five percent.
Right. So he said earlier that he wasn't sure on that number. We'll have to get that clarified.
So.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna make a comment on, instead of promoting promoting tourism, we want to promote eating out. I think is at that point, could be all about eating, people going and eating out.
Thank you.
So the other thing I would suggest as a must is that the city council adopt an ordinance. That dedicates a specific allocation of property tax, a millage or a percentage of property tax. Not a total amount. Because it needs to change, it needs to grow as inflation grows and as as property values grow, our portion should grow as well. The other thing, and and again, this isn't an exhaustive list, these are the things that that I'm, I think are the top of the list for me anyways. I think that the Parks Commission should be its own contract review board. And if if you're not sure what that means, right now, every time you approve a contract. Like to design a park or to build a bridge or to. Do anything that costs more than thirty thousand dollars, pretty much. I have to also take that to the city council for them to approve. And then there's confusion about, are we approving? The idea of doing this or just reviewing it to see if it meets the contract requirements? Well, the the actuality of it is the council's only reviewing it to look at whether or not we've met the contracting requirements. Unfortunately. It, you know, it's not always the case and and there can be some some creep into there with, I don't necessarily believe in this project or. Or I don't think that we should be using this money for this project or so on and so forth. And in my opinion, that's why there's a Parks Commission that's separately elected. So that the city council doesn't have to worry about prioritizing. Or splitting between parks and and city and the police or fire. You're, you have control over your money and how you spend it for the purposes you're elected for to to run Ashland Parks and Recreation. You should also be able to approve the own, the contracts that you that you approve, so to speak, so.
Have you, have you discussed any of this with the city? Like this?
Yes, I have. Let me get off of screen share here. Yes, I have. I have not discussed the last item, which is the contract review board. I brought it up with the city attorney in years past, and it's always been like, ah, I don't know. But I I would like to, I'd like to look at that again. And now, if we do go forward and do have a dedicated funding source, I think there's a better argument for that.
Yeah. Commissioner Wong?
Yeah, going back to your conditions. Your, the fourth condition, third or fourth condition, it doesn't allocate it. It doesn't allocate it. I think you meant allocation, but what what do you mean by allocation?
I mean, I mean, a percentage of property tax or a millage, which is to me the same thing.
That I I think it should state that because an allocation could be a lump sum, it could be anything. So I think I think that needs to change to a percentage.
I will change that.
Right. And and once again, the percentage, the advantage of a percentage is then that fluctuates as. Property taxes increase, then the percentage, we continue to get that percentage of the increased property taxes. Go ahead, Commissioner Wong.
And then I'm also wondering whether it might make sense to. To rather than say an ordinance, an ordinance or even better would be. A modification to the city charter.
Yeah. That's, that actually is better.
Yeah.
Point out. But a city charter, just so everybody is clear, the only the voters can approve an amendment to the city charter. But, you know, they, I think if they're aware of the issue and and this, this whole thing with food and beverage. Another good thing about it is it brings light to our issue that we don't have a dedicated funding source. So people might ask, well, how are they funded right now? Well, you'd be surprised to hear that, you know, our our funding is not secure and da, 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 da. It brings, it brings, it gives us a podium to speak from on these issues where if the city council. If we just said, the city council came up with a a proposal and it was a bargain again, or a negotiation or compromise. And we just went along with it, the the public never knows that there's actually an issue. So I like it for that reason as well.
Commissioner Bell?
I was just gonna say that a dollar and nine cents of per thousand dollars of assessed property value is already a percentage of property tax.
It is. It's a percentage of the total taxing amount, four dollars.
So in other words, if they didn't want to establish a a dollar per thousand. We'd want a percentage of the total, which would be relatively the same thing.
Well, and I guess the one good thing about a percentage is that if for some reason the city council was able to increase their, their. And we would increase as well. So saying a percentage as opposed to saying a dollar and nine actually would would benefit us that way if that were.
So, you know, there's. You know, I've been thinking about this a lot too, and I'll just give my two cents is, is, you know. If it goes to this, if it were to go to this system, then the food and beverage. I, to me, it would become, instead of food and beverage tax, would be really the parks tax. You know, people would have to look at it as that's the way our park system is is funded and. You know, I, which I I think if it went to the voters, I think one of the points that was already made is. We we should look at it, you know, at extending the sunset. On the, on that, on that tax so that we have more than nine years of, you know, of this dedicated fund. We really need, we need like twenty years or or perpetuity, but I don't know that we, you know, we would get that, but at least. To to have that as be one of the the points that we would negotiate for, for sure, I have, I believe. So let's add that. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Did you have any? Where did you want the discussion to go to beyond this, Michael?
Um, I I need to, you know, it's not up for emotion or anything like that, but I I'd like to know. If if the commissioners generally agree or oppose what we're talking about here.
Well, I I personally am in agreement, and especially I think. That the last bullet point that you said you hadn't discussed with the city, I think that needs to be, that needs to be brought up because. I I just look at the the benefits of the autonomy of, even though it's, it's, it has higher risk. Than than where we are right now, I think, I think it it makes us more autonomous. And if you, and we can, I don't know what the verbiage you use, but, you know, if if we can approve our own contracts and. And we, you know, we have control over, you know, over the funds and we don't have to go to city council to necessarily. Get approval for the things we do now, I I, to me, I see that as an advantage. Even though the risk factor might go up a bit.
It seems like it, there's also inefficiency to it as well. The city council doesn't have to duplicate the work we've already done. I mean, maybe you could present it to them as a cost savings. They don't have to duplicate work A P R C has already completed.
Right, and I, I believe with that, in that as well. Commissioner Eldridge?
Yeah, I I also support it. I think it makes sort of practical sense. I mean, as I think for the people of Ashland, you know, these food and beverage taxes. When we, when more of them come in, it means that people have expendable, it's sort of luxury. Quality of life kind of money. And so when Ashland is bringing in lots of food and beverage taxes, then we put that money towards the parks and and and. And the open spaces and the trails, and it really seems to like, you know. It sounds like it makes sense and it sounds like it would. Like a really practical funding source that the public would support, I think.
Commissioner Lewis?
Way back when they proposed this prepared food and beverage tax. It originally was a one percent tax for parks acquisition. That's where it started out. The council, and that goes back to the histories of the council. They decided, well, if they made it five percent and took four percent to pay for the wastewater treatment plant, which was a pretty extensive. Bond and it would be helpful for them. And so it's interesting how. How this has progressed over the years and and I eat out a lot, so. I I support parks and wastewater treatment in many ways.
Commissioner Wong?
Well, I I support with the conditions, I support this also. I do want to point out, though, that it really doesn't give us any more. Security than what we have right now. I guess in a sense it does because. Only. Only sixty percent of our, of our budget can be taken away from us rather than direct, only sixty percent can be taken away. Whereas before it was basically a hundred percent. So in that sense, there is some more. Somewhat security, but my point is that we're still at the mercy of the budget committee. In terms of of how much money we will have for parks. And because they still are going to control sixty, fifty to sixty percent of our budget.
That's possible, yes. Any other comments from commissioners? I I think you got a pretty clear message there, Michael.
Yes, and just to be. Transparent, I guess, the our our. Template for doing this and what we can potentially end up doing is the Rogue Valley Sewer Service. They're a lot like us. The only thing that was different about them previously was. They actually controlled all of their funds. And as we go forward and we do potentially control all of our funds, we can look at them and see. How they operate, because I know that they're their own contract review board, for instance, not the city council. But they are through charter, they're correct, they're created the same way as the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission is. So so there is a template out there for all of these things.
Very good then.
Right, so the last item I have. Is the C I P and and I'll probably, I'll go through this pretty quick because I'm not asking you to approve anything tonight. I just want you to be aware of kind of how we're looking at allocations at this point. And if you have strong feelings today or after today, please feel free to to call me one on one as well. We can talk about it. Oh, I wanted to explain really quick the top bar here, the ribbon. Our food and our. Capital Improvement Plan, we get funding from several different sources. And the way that I've organized this, and this is the same that you've seen in years past, so if you've seen this before, you. You kind of know how it's organized, but food and beverage is is pretty much our main source for capital improvement. System development charges are very minimal amount of income that we get that goes through to. C I P, but it generally just goes to property acquisition. That's generally where it's gone. And it's always been around fifty thousand dollars per year. The other, the the category that's the catchall, and I'll break these down as we're going through these, but. These could be grants or they could be bonds. They also, and I include as grants, I include. The Ashland Parks Foundation where they have money that they're giving to us for certain projects. I I consider that a grant. So that's where you'll see all of the different dollar amounts are falling into one of these categories. And we have these three categories for the first fiscal year and these three categories for the second fiscal year. And some of these projects have money spent in the first and second. So as we go through, I'll I'll explain, I'm going to do it pretty quick. And I'll stop whenever I see a hand go up. So the first thing, we have to pay our debt. We have to make our our payments on our debt. And we have, we are holding debt for Kaia, Briscoe, the school, not the school, actually, I'm sorry. The park next to the school. And Garfield Park for the major improvements that we did at Garfield Park. We pay the bond payments from food and beverage, and that comes right off the top. That's almost a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. And I've shown you in the past how long that extends out, but we have, I believe, the the net, the first thing, the Kaia drops off in about six or seven years. So we still have, we still have those payments for at least another five to seven years. The operation transfer in, this comes from the Capital Improvement Plan. And goes directly to operations, and this is where you saw, you know, that we were bringing money in on the last slide to make ends meet. It's four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. When I presented the budget to you, it was four hundred thousand dollars, but the commissioners instructed us to do. Instructed us to do what we could to keep the pool open seven days a week, because we, remember, we proposed it at five days a week to save money. Um, in order to keep it open seven days a week, you told us it'd be all right to take money from the pool project. Which has money dedicated it to it, and we took thirty-five thousand dollars per year, so that's why it comes up to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand is going to the pool, the rest of it is general, um, paying for salaries and maintenance and, and different things like that. The real estate acquisition, and in parentheses, East Main is in here, this is actually the real estate acquisition line item. East Main is the only project that we have under contract right now, um, and that's why it's in parentheses, kind of like we have it up here. We, um, but just to be clear, there is more money in this line item than we need for East Main. Uh, we need a hundred thousand dollars for East Main, and that's where you see right here this SDC. But I also put the SDCs from next year in here as well, and maybe next year it's even more than fifty thousand dollars. But that gives us a little bit of money in case something happens and we need money for Ernest or something like that, um, where some properties come up. We're not going to be able to buy anything in Ashland for fifty thousand dollars, but at least we're keeping some money in this account. And generally, that's where SDCs go anyways. That's my proposal. Um, the Procy Fountain, um, this one is its own line item because it has been for a very long time. And, um, it's four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars because that's our current estimate of what it would take to. Restore the Butler Procy Fountain. We've always had food and beverage of about thirty-five thousand dollars in there. But the, um, the Ashland Parks Foundation has, uh, stated that they would like to dedicate some money to. Um, some money that they already have to the Procy Fountain. And then on the, in this other year, I'm showing a lot more money coming in. And that potentially could be money that's raised through a capital campaign that's put on by the Ashland Parks Foundation that's specific to. The Procy Fountain. So in this case, this is money from the Parks Foundation. And so is this, but there, yeah, I'm not going to get into, but yeah, they're both grants from the Parks Foundation. Any questions on those first four? Okay, so the Japanese Garden, um. I, I'm not showing here the money that we've already spent on the Japanese Garden, but, um, this is all grant money. The only money we're putting towards, as Ashland Parks and Recreation, putting towards the project is in kind, um, that was.
We, we don't see that, uh, that, there we go.
Oh, is it there? Okay, so now, all right, so the Japanese Garden, um, to finish it up in the next biennium, it won't be more than. One point two five million dollars, and so that's why I have that amount there. Most likely it will be less, um, because. Uh, they are moving very quickly and they're, they're spending, uh, or. Uh, we're spending more money on the early end for a, a lot of work that they're doing right at the very beginning. So the money, the money, a lot of work is getting done right off the bat, and it'll probably slow down after a little while. Um, but, uh, but yeah, they've been working quickly up there, so we're seeing the money go out a little bit quicker than we anticipated. But that's okay, because all of the money is from a grant and all the money is there. We're not waiting on anything to come in. Uh, the Daniel Meyer Pool Rebuild, uh, we've got fifty, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars left in there after we took out the thirty-five thousand. Um, for the, for each year, for the operations for the pool, um. So that's food and beverage that you've dedicated to there, but we still need another five million dollars in some sort of. Form, grants or loans or whatever it's going to be in order to accomplish that. So when you see it in this column. Sometimes the money's already there, sometimes it's not, uh, it's, this money's not there yet. That's something we're anticipating. Doing hopefully in the next couple of years.
Um, and the five million dollars, that's just an estimate, correct?
It is.
I mean, it could, it could be, um, four point five or six point five.
I hope it's not six point five, but yes, I'm, it could be four point five or three point five, you know, but you're right, it could be more. It is an estimate, but the estimate's based off of. Information that we have now, um, you know, the longer we go, the more, the more we have to add to this, so. Um, and then we are also going to be talking about the pool and, and, and coming weeks with the school district and, and. You know, talking about the size of it and whether it's going, at the end, it's going to be the size that we're, we're looking at now, or if there's going to be something else that happens, so. Um, so that number could be affected a number of different ways, and it's our best estimate at this point. So the East Main Park Development, all of the money that you see in this line item is already dedicated. Hundred and twenty-five thousand from food and beverage, that money's already there, six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars from, from, um. Selling other properties and this one hundred and twenty-five thousand as well, that is already there. That money exists and is waiting, um, for the project to move forward.
Commissioner Watt?
Yeah, I thought we had more, um, food and beverage money, uh, set aside than one twenty-five. Did we take money out of there at some point?
Yeah, we did. And we've spent money on the project too. I mean, we, if you recall, we, we've done surveys and, and. And, uh, hired engineers to come in and do drawings for the other park, so there's money that's gone out as well. So. Um, Kestrel Bridge, this is a grant that we were just awarded, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've already spent enough money to cover our match on this five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this, uh, going forward, hopefully, barring any issues with bidding, um, we are going to get the money. From, to the hundred percent of the money to build the bridge with this grant. Uh, Lithium Park, Lithia Park Improvements. Um, this money actually exists as well at the Parks Foundation, there's two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in an account that's marked for Lithia Park. I, I put this in here because, um, the people who donated that money. And the sources that it came from, they, they intended that it was going to go to make improvements to Lithia Park. And although we don't have the master plan completed yet, um, there is money in the Parks Foundation that could go to. Projects, whatever the priorities are, be it the sidewalk or whatever it is, um, going forward in Lithia Park.
Commissioner Bell?
But just for clarification, that money's not actually in the APRC bank account at this point, is that right?
It's not, but it is in, it is in the foundation and it's dedicated to us, so it couldn't be used for anything else. Um, the All Parks Master Plan, uh, this is, this is supposed to wrap in all of those different, uh. Projects that we're looking at doing with the master plan.
My, when I put other, never mind.
Yeah, it's, it looks like there's a little bit of a lag, I'm sorry about that. So, uh, I put two hundred thousand dollars in there and these funds could be used, um. The fifty thousand specifically, I think should be dedicated to the SDC. Whatever is going to help us increase our SDC fees, whatever studies we need to do to increase our SDC fees. We can use SDC dollars to do studies on the SDC fees themselves.
Commissioner Watt?
Um, I think I just heard Director Black say he'd put two hundred thousand in there, but I, I just see one fifty, did, where, where's the two hundred?
Are you, are you not seeing this right here?
Fifty and one.
Oh, you know what I'm doing? Got it. Um, what I was doing is I was looking at, um. What you had sent out on another screen.
Yeah, I changed it.
You changed it, okay.
So, um, so we have a hundred and fifty from food and beverage, fifty from SDCs. I think that, that is pretty close to what we're going to need. I'm sure we could use more, but if we do some of it in-house. As capacity allows, this is going to get us on the track to completing a lot of those projects. Some of this money here could be used for the, um, the environmental review as well, if we do end up hiring a consultant. Um, for the larger pieces of it, I know there's some of it that we can just implement quickly, but there might be larger pieces, and that's what the, these. Um, dollar amounts could be used for. Um, the Mace Property Trail, at different times, there was a lot more money in here for this. I'd like to keep twenty-five thousand dollars in here so that we can, um, keep maintaining that trail and potentially improve. Um, uh, more of the trail, especially the slope going up, um, to Oak Street and, um. So I'd like to keep twenty-five thousand dollars in there if possible. Uh, the Skills Park, and this is also the Pump Track, I'm sorry for excluding the Pump Track on here, but it's supposed to be both. Or one, you know, the Pump Track, I think, is the priority. Um, but this is something that we'd be working with the, um, the community on raising funds for, those could come from various different. Places, it could be in kind, it could be through grants or whatever. Um, the Oak Knoll Playground, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, uh, the second year, I'm proposing from food and beverage. Uh, TID Improvements, a hundred thousand dollars over the next two years. Sorry, it probably hasn't come up yet. Let me know when it comes up.
It's there.
Okay, so TID Improvements, that, uh, that's irrigation improvements, actually, I'll change that to irrigation improvements. Uh, would be a hundred thousand dollars over the next, uh, two years. Ashland Creek, uh, base basketball would be seventy-five thousand, and I have that in the other category right now. That's your prerogative, if you want us to look for a grant for that, or if you want to prioritize it to the level that it gets dedicated food and beverage funds. Um, you just let us know how you want that to happen, um, but that money could come from a grant from number of sources. And, uh, we can start looking for those sources right away. The, um, there is a second Bear Creek Greenway Pedestrian Bridge that's required, sorry.
Uh, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to point out that, um, the Mace Property Trail is not on our, our goal list, and it's got. Uh, food and beverage money for it, whereas Ashland Creek Park Basketball Court is on our goal list. And, you know, there, there's no money from food and beverage listed for it.
Okay, so this is where I, I depart from you on this. I, I think it does make sense because. Previously, you've adopted a Trails Master Plan and you've adopted a, uh, an amendment to the Bear Creek Greenway Plan after doing. Several studies on these things and spending a lot of time on them. Um, the, the fact that they're not on the goals list, I don't think makes them, um, not a priority. Or means that money can't be spent on them. You may have a point in where maybe money could come from. Um, should go to prioritize projects first, but isn't, isn't, uh, an adopted plan a prioritized project as well?
Go ahead.
Well, you know, right at this point, we have a pedestrian, we have a, um, as far as I'm concerned, and I. Uh, traverse that trail often, we have an adequate, uh, uh, trail through the Mace Property. Um, so yes, of course it could be improved, but there's places. And there's places in Lithia Park where we have, have, uh, frankly, dangerous, uh, situations. And we're not dealing with those, so I, I'm not sure why we're going to pick on improving the Mace Property. Um, when the only way to really make a significant improvement to it would be to make it, um, um, road bike, uh. Access, which would mean paving, uh, part of it. So I, I just don't see why that's, why that's a priority compared to all the other trails we have. But frankly, a number of them need work more than that.
Well, and I don't, I wouldn't limit it to just road bikes that are paved, it's skateboards and strollers and roller skate.
But, but my point is, twenty-five thousand dollars is just to kind of help do, do minimal improvements. We need minimal improvements all over, twenty-five thousand dollars is not going to pave it. It's not even going to start to pave it. So all we're really talking about is making, um, um, incremental changes to an existing trail. And I would, uh, would maintain that money could be better spent on other trails, for example, in Lithia Park.
Commissioner Bell?
I'm curious, is there a reason that you think that Mace, the Mace Property Trail ought to have. The first crack at the money instead of some other trail? I mean, is there?
I don't think it's the first crack at the money. I mean, it's only twenty-five thousand dollars out of two million dollars about, but, um. The, the, the thing is, there are many things that we have to accomplish throughout the system. There's so many things that have to be accomplished. Not every one of them could possibly be prioritized by the Parks Commissioners. That's why we have master plans and all these different plans and things like that. The Mace Property, for instance, a specific project that needs to be undertaken at that property is. There is a slope issue, um, and a potential danger issue when you're walking down the slope from. I can't remember the name of the street.
Oh, oh, well, off Old Street.
Yeah, it's those two.
The reason is that it's more dangerous than any other of the, of the not fully maintained trails in the system.
I wouldn't say it's more dangerous, I would say that it is an issue and it needs to be addressed. Lithia Park has two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in it that, that isn't allocated to any specific project. Um, I, I, I don't, I, I think I'll just stop talking because it's really, I'm telling you the reasons why I put it in there. It's up to you whether it stays in there. I mean, in the, in the end, it's, it's your choice. So those are the reasons why it's there. Um, I, I think it'd be nice to have it there, but it's, it's really your choice how you allocate these funds.
But just in your assessment, the Mace Property Trail is the most, uh, well, the most dangerous trail. Most in need of some attention at the moment, it sounds like.
No, I wouldn't say that either. I'd say it's a trail that's been identified that needs attention. Um, and it's an important piece of transportation infrastructure. If I, if I had my way and I was making the decisions, I would pave it right now. Because then it would open it up to all, um, active transportation modes where right now it's mainly walking or mountain biking or. Large wheeled strollers and, and things like that. Um, so. So anyways, I, I think I'm just trying to keep some money in there to allow for. Um, some improvements to continue to take place on there because more and more people use it. And I'd hate for it to get the reputation that it is, um, it's becoming less and less desirable and therefore less and less people use it. When it provides such an important cut through from Oak to North Mountain, um. Commissioner Bell, the problem, the reason why I'm kind of shying off from saying most dangerous is because. I, I don't think that that's a position that I want to get into, classify what's the most dangerous. Um, and say one place is, is less dangerous than another place. There are certainly a lot of places within Ashland in the watershed that need to be addressed for safety. There's a lot of them. Um, some of them have sources dedicated to them al- already, some of them don't. But this is one, um, that I just identified and that there is a plan in place, and I'd like to keep some money in there for it, and that's, that's all it is.
Commissioner Watt?
Yeah, I, um, I, it, just responding to, to, uh, Commissioner Bell, um, what I would. I, I have no idea what the most, uh, you know, dangerous, most critical trails are either, but I would. Clearly, um, argue that, uh, what's called the main upper Lithia Park East Side Trail. The entrance, uh, the two ends of that, uh, one end and, um, it ends on Pioneer Street and the other that. Um, uh, starts and ends on Glenview. Those entry, entryways on both ends are clearly, um, in need of, of more safety work. Than anything on the Mace Trail.
In, in your opinion, yes.
In my opinion, but, uh, you know, uh, let, let anybody walk them and, and I challenge anybody to walk those and then disagree with me. It's just obvious.
Right, so I, I guess with Director Black saying that, if we want to remove this. From the CIP, we can do that, not, not tonight necessarily, but I mean, if you want to send that message that. You know, that, that, that that needs to be removed, I mean, we can do that. I think, you know, this is his, this is his presentation as to the, you know, to where. The, where the money, where he sees the money going, so. This seems to be in question, so, you know, when, when we finally approve the CIP. We can, we can remove this line item or put it somewhere else if we need to. Correct?
Correct, that is absolute truth. Um, so the second pedestrian bridge is, is just an extension of the Greenway as well. Um, looking for grants on that, unfortunately, I think I may have, um. Overestimated when the money would be available for this grant that we got just recently. It might not be in twenty-two, twenty-three. So we can look for other grants as well, but I'm, I, I think we should leave that dollar figure in there, and I think we should leave. The, the money and from food and beverage as well to do some planning, but that's up to you and how you want to approach that. Um, the Beach Creek Restoration is not a prioritized project either, it's not even technically, um. Well, might be in a master plan for North Mountain Park, but, uh. well, might be in a master plan for North Mountain Park, but uh it is, it's not on your list. I don't think it should be on your list. I don't think it rises to the level of needing to be on a master plan or a a um goals list. But there is some work that needs to be done to Beach Creek, and we have a a group that is willing to look for grants to get that done. So I I don't want to stand in the way of them applying for grants, so I suggest we keep that one on there with the idea that that thirty-five thousand would come from grants. The Motorola System is the irrigation control system. We don't know how much that's going to cost, but our estimate is two hundred thousand dollars at this point. Hopefully, it's less, but we had, I had to put a number in there, so I put two hundred thousand in there. Um, let me get, so I I'll just finish this up really quick here. So the total CIP for the next two years is eleven million eight hundred thousand dollars. And you can see where the money is. Um, most of it is in food and beverage, as you can see in these two columns. And then you've got just, you know, a pretty minor amount in SDCs, and then grants is is pretty big is, but that money is is speculative speculative. Uh, we don't know that we're going to get that. We technically don't know that we're going to get all the money in food and beverage either, but a as I said, the twenty-five percent that we're getting now has been pretty consistent, and the federal government has um given money to the city of Ashland to make up for lost revenues. And we have been told that we will be getting some money uh for lost food and beverage revenue. I just haven't been told how much. This is what we're anticipating for that line item, though. Food and beverage, uh we're going to carry forward about a million two, and then hopefully bring in six hundred thousand dollars each year, and that's the twenty-five percent. And then, so that's a two-point-three million dollar total for the uh for the biennium. And what I showed you in the previous page that we need to cover everything in there is two million three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, if we have more money in food and beverage, that means we have more money, and um it's not allocated to anything, and you could allocate that to wherever you want if that money comes in.
Commissioner Watt?
Yeah, I I think my question got answered, which is that uh um this does not include money we're anticipating getting from the federal government.
That's correct. If we get four hundred thousand dollars from the federal government, which could be the case, um then that would be four hundred thousand dollars that you could use to prioritize however you you like. So you go.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, but basically, um I would assume that we're going to do a a goal setting and and the um that money would be used consistent with our goal setting, would it not?
Yeah, of course. Well, it it's, I mean, well, you're the only one who can decide how it's going to be used since it's your decision, but I would propose that the money go to things that have been prioritized, absolutely. So the SDCs, as I stated, um are only fifty thousand dollars a year, and we're carrying forward about a hundred thousand. The land sales that I talked about previously that we've um were banking money for property that was already sold is six hundred and ninety-one thousand. Grants is again the big item, and if we got all the grants that we're anticipating and the bonds, sorry, and the bonds, uh which includes the pool, uh then that would be the amount that we're looking at, eight and a half million dollars pretty much. Um, the other account, um I should have, I knew I should have written this down. I'm blanking on where this one, this one's coming from now. Um, Tara's Tara could pop in and tell me if she remembers, but I'm blanking on it. I'm sorry. Um.
Commissioner Bell, do you have a question?
Well, I'm just curious. I don't mean to like, uh, this isn't meant to be entrapment or something, but are we anticipating getting a bond for the pool?
No, I don't know. I think we're anticipating that it's going to cost a lot of money that we don't have, and one of the options is a bond. So that's about all I can say on that. I mean, uh, we had looked at doing a revenue bond previously, so it's definitely in the in the toolbox, but there might be other things in the toolbox as well that we can consider. So the total anticipated resources, if we were to do everything in the CIP, which generally isn't the case, but if we were to do everything in the CIP over the next two years, we'd need eleven million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, or no, that resources are eight hun eight million, sorry, eleven million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred. The the actual expense, if you recall from the last page, was only eleven million eight hundred and three. That leaves about fifty-four thousand dollars that you could um you could allocate right now. I mean, not this second, but I, we could put that into a to any line item or a new item if you would like to. So keep that in mind. There, just based on our projections, we do have a surplus of fifty-four thousand dollars, so. And that basically is my presentation. I I wanted to get this out in front of you so I can get comments on it and give you some of the reasoning, obviously, why I think she thinks should be the way that I proposed it. But um in the end, you know, you can move the things around however you want. Um, we can add, we could even add the potential money that will be coming from the federal government and just put a asterix on it that says that this is contingent upon receiving money from um the the Economic Relief Act. I think that's what it's called. Um, and you can also put that fifty-four thousand dollars in there as well as move things around however you like in there. So I can send out the latest copy of this to you uh tomorrow, and then you can, so you can have it as kind of a worksheet and and look at it. So.
So I I see that um so tentatively, we have this set for adoption at our next Wednesday meeting.
I don't, I don't think that we can do that. Um, not next, yeah, next week, there's no way we can do that.
Okay.
Um, so the the goals have to be approved first.
Sure.
And and I I had put it on there initially thinking that maybe we would be ahead far enough, but and discussions this week and and thinking about this, there there's absolutely no way I'd be recommending a CIP at the next meeting.
Right. So we will be focusing more than on on adopting our goals, setting our priorities, and then at a at a later date, probably May, I would suspect, then we would be looking at adopting the CIP plan. Do you think, Michael?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Question? Comments? Okay, you got a work cut out for us. All right, well, those were the three items that we wanted to cover tonight. Um you know, we have a couple minutes. Um, I suppose we could entertain anything from uh staff or commissioners if there's any items, small items that wanted to be brought up or or uh announced, not necessarily for discussion, but announced. Michael Black and then Commissioner Lewis.
So um Commissioner Gardner is aware of this, but I I think the rest of the commissioners should be aware of um something that happened recently. Uh, we were, Commissioner Gardner and I were asked to meet with uh some people from the city, some elected officials from the city and a a concert organizer to uh explore putting a um concert in uh Lithia Park later on this year, a rock concert and and making a an event out of it, maybe even a three-day event. Um, unfortunately, uh I I had to uh although we agreed to look into it after talking to my staff about it more, um their concern was that by um by prioritizing something new, um what are we saying about the things that we lost during COVID that we're still struggling to bring back? Shouldn't we focus on bringing back the things that we were doing previously as opposed to trying to do something new? And couple that with um the fact that the commissioners have not ever expressed a uh recently expressed a goal or a directive to me to go after and and find uh economic development opportunities for the downtown and or create a concert in the downtown. I unfortunately had to uh let the organizer know that uh it didn't look like it was something that we could focus our efforts on. I did let him know that he is more than welcome to approach the Parks Commission and to uh to ask them, and if you wanted to give me directive to do that, then that's what I would do because you're my boss, and and I do what you say. Um, but another point I wanted to bring up is um this also exemplifies, or maybe not exemplifies, maybe um uh shows how there is a misunderstanding of how we operate and what Ashland Parks and Recreation is. Ashland Parks and Recreation has its own separately elected board, and um and you give me directive through the goals, through the CIP, through the budget, through meetings, motions and meetings, through discussions and committees and things like that. And um and I think it's still not quite understood that um this this board is actually a policy board and not a recommendation body to the city council. And um so I wanted to point this out because you may hear about this, and I apologize for for um for any um hard feelings about taking a few weeks uh to to let them know that I didn't think it was going to be a possibility. Um, but I just want you to be aware and to understand that things like this happen from time to time where um there might be someone at the city who who really thinks they should direct me to do something. Um, but I'm in the uncomfortable position sometimes, and it's very uncomfortable. It's it's extremely uncomfortable to have to tell um somebody, well, I don't really work for you. I I work for the commissioners. And I try not to do that, so I try to be as accommodating as possible without um without guaranteeing that I'm going to do something that may not be the directive of my bosses, the elected Parks Commissioners. So I I wanted to bring that up to you, just make you aware of that. Um, and Mike, did you want to add anything else to that?
No, not not at all. It's just that, you know, it was a concept that was brought to us by a a counselor and and the mayor and you know, quite frankly, um it 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 butted up against um uh the noise ordinance that we have in Ashland. Um, there was, there was talk of um alcohol sales in Lithia Park, which we, you know, is still an uh uh item that we've tackled, tried to tackle over the years and have, you know, we have not come to any agreement on uh on on that kind of thing. And so there was, there was these obstacles that um as Michael said, you know, really, I think park staff did not have the uh the capacity to be able to deal with uh wi- wi- with all the items and uh it, you know, it's something that might happen in the future, but it's not going to happen this year. And uh, you know, that's all I would add add to that, you know. It wasn't uh, it wasn't as if uh APRC misled anyone or didn't, you know. I I mean, you know, Commissioner Eldridge brought up red tape earlier in the discussion tonight, and and you know, it it may seem like red tape to some people, but um when you have ordinances that um you know, that you want exceptions to that either we can or even as park commissioners can or cannot do, it it makes it a kind of an awkward situation, so. Um, we'll probably continue to 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 discuss something like this, but uh I think a three-day rock festival in Lithia Park at the band shelf probably isn't going to happen this summer. So that's all I have to add. Uh, Commissioner Lewis, you had your hand up earlier, and then I'll go to Commissioner Eldridge. Do you want to?
I have um about the uh uh public arts meetings at eight-thirty Friday, and then also at one-thirty is the recreation um subcommittee. So uh uh I think that the recreation subcommittee uh meeting will dovetail into our meeting with the school district uh when that comes up. So hopefully, I I'm excited to hear that that there's some movement on that end of it too. So it just uh the two meetings coming up uh will get you out some information on where we're going on those fronts.
Excellent. Commissioner, Commissioner Eldridge, did you want to add anything?
Uh, just a brief comment without knowing, obviously, any more than was just discussed about this proposed concert. Um, you know, my thought is is that um there are special events that occur in in any city and that at the very least, and I understand your point about red tape, there are rules for a reason and but um it's the lack of clarity for for potentially those organizers, right? They're they're going to a city councilor, and then they're going to APRC. APRC doesn't really think that that's their job, city council. And and it's it's the confusion about what an organizer or what somebody who has an idea who wants to do something on on park land, like what what the steps are to even get a special exception, to say, oh, I want to do this special exception. And you know, there are probably a lot of people in Ashland that would be very excited about an event like that and have, you know, uh what it it's hard for you to, for us to necessarily know what the public would think about that and what the overwhelming opinion would be. But I think it really speaks to my point of this uh frustration amongst groups and organizations that come and want to have like this a cultural event or something in Ashland, and they don't, and they get totally frustrated, and they get kind of shot around to different places, and they get led on for weeks, and then they get told no. And then, you know, I've I've seen this situation happen where organizers, race organizers, um you know, musicians, artists, they just say, oh, forget it. Ashland's impossible. Don't don't even bother going to Ashland. And that sentiment upsets me because, you know, this should be a center of culture and art and 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 outdoor recreation, and it doesn't, I I would prefer to not have the town have this reputation of like, forget it, you'll never be able to do anything there.
Well, and I just want to assure you that I have told them there are ways to accomplish what they'd like, and in fact, uh Commissioner Gardner and I also mentioned that there are places where this actually is allowed, and you don't have to have exceptions to be able to do it. And um have also given them the information of how to apply to hold their own event as opposed to us holding an event. Uh, my point to you is just to state that uh there, you know, this is a interaction between the city and me where the city is is actually trying to direct me to do something, and and I I I don't technically take direction from the city, but a lot of times I I have to defer to the city and um the city council and and other people, and um and in this situation, I had to say, well, this isn't a priority for us, so.
Yeah, I I think from the perspective of the person coming to Ashland is is just so confusing to them.
Yeah, I get it.
Anything we can do to diminish that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, well, taken. Anything else from commissioners? Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, um I think you might have missed it at the beginning, Julian. We're gonna set up a uh a meeting with the Ashland School District on uh Tuesday, uh April twenty-seventh at six-thirty. Um, I I'll have more information, uh but we took a poll uh early in the meeting, and uh that was the best date for um for the rest of the commissioners. So we're going to try to set that up, and it's an optional meeting, but we're we're going to meet with the school board and discuss uh uh different items that are on our plate.
Okay, sorry for missing the first part of the meeting. I was having technical difficulties.
Sure, not a problem. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that, and we'll send out more information. I'll get back to uh the school board, and then I'll send out additional information uh this week.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, I don't see any other hands going up, so we will adjourn the meeting and uh reconvene next Wednesday at six o'clock for a regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.